I'd like to call this meeting to order if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, any subtractions from the consent agenda? Motion to approve the consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. First up, we have Anoka County Transportation Project. Joe Ferson?
Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. So I came here tonight to update you guys on several projects that are coming out here that Anoka County will be working out within the city of Columbus.
Do you need some help, please?
Yeah, yep, I'll sit here. Everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
So Elizabeth, you want to go to the first slide there?
Is that the first one?
Uh, yeah, there we go. So the four projects I'm going to go over tonight is County Road 17 and 18. We have an intersection project there. We're going to install a signal system there. It's a H-SIP project that we received federal funding for. The nice thing with that is it covers 90% of the cost of the project, which is a benefit. It's similar to the existing signal system just south of this signal. If you know Lexington there, just to the south of 18 and Broadway and 17, there's another system there already. It's going to be a similar system to that. There'll be a left turn lane installed for both northbound and southbound, and then of course, a right turn and a left turn from westbound traffic. So, second project will be the County Road 18 Shoulder Widening Project. Again, that's some H-SIP funding that was received for that. And then I'll get into the kind of the main gist of the conversation this evening, which will be the 23 and 54 realignment. Go ahead and go to the next one. So, it's really hard to see on here, but this is the 17 and 18 Intersection Improvements. A signal will be put in, right in this location. As I mentioned, for northbound, it's going to include a right turn lane to eastbound Broadway. It'll include a through lane as well as a left turn lane. Now, at this time, there is no existing development over here. There's no street there. However, there is an access drive right where that street would be. So we need to address that with our design. So we're putting in the left turn lane there. It's also facilitated because we need a left turn lane for southbound. So naturally, because you have the southbound left turn lane, you're basically building the northbound left turn lane at the same time. So, we'll stripe both those for left turn lanes, and then there'll be a through lane, southbound. And like I mentioned, for westbound, there'll be a right turn lane to go north, left turn lane to go south, and that'll meet our needs at this time. Before I go on from this picture, you guys have any questions at this time? Okay.
There was accidents there, what's the justification for the?
Yeah, there were some accidents there, and with the signal installation down here, you know, it's a similar situation. And there's also a heavy westbound or westbound to southbound movement here. I think Denny is well aware of that area.
I'm on that road, coming and going, it's...
So you caused the accidents?
No, not yet, not at all.
Not that he'll admit, but, um, yeah, so there's a heavy westbound to southbound movement here, so that'll facilitate that. So a quick schedule on that one. Like I mentioned, it's fiscal year 2019 Highway Safety Improvement Project Funds. We're going to finalize plans here in 2018. We're almost at the 30% stage right now. We're going to start acquiring the right-of-way. There's about three parcels that we need to acquire right-of-way from. We're going to widen both ways on that project, but we'll acquire the necessary right-of-way in 18. Receive bids late this year, early 2019 with a 2019 construction. Now, as we all know, there's a lot of projects going on in the city of Columbus right now. So, you know, we're going to work with the schedule on this one, knowing that 23 will hopefully be under construction at that time. We've got the 97 Bridge under construction at that time, as well as, I'm not sure what Detours MINDOT will have in place for whatever work they're doing on 35. So, hopefully none, but we'll look at that as we move forward. Okay, go ahead. So this looks like a big colorful map here. What this is, is on County Road 18, so Broadway just east of that Intersection Improvement Project, we're going to widen the shoulders. So, we have eight-foot shoulders from Lexington east to about County Road 19. We have nice eight-foot shoulders there. We're going to continue that all the way over to 62.
Jeff, that's what you've been waiting for.
So that'll be a nice project.
Talked about it when you repaved it.
Kettle River Boulevard.
Kettle River to, uh, yep, from Potomac to Kettle River.
Nice.
So, that's another advantageous project too. So, we received similar funding, H-SIP funding on that one. So we're looking forward to that too. That'll be likely a 19 project, but again, we'll have to look at schedules and...
Are you doing anything at 19 and 18?
We're going to widen the shoulder there too.
Well, a turn lane, anything? Because right now, we have a real problem with people bypassing on the north side to get around people turning south.
Okay.
That's a real problem. We've had, we've talked to the sheriff. People, Bill, people do it to you all the time too?
Every day.
They do it to me all the time too, so.
Every night.
Dangerous as heck.
Is there, no, I can't remember, is there a right turn lane?
There's nothing there.
There's a right turn lane to go north up Potomac. They use it for a bypass lane.
Right. So if there's anything you can do to make that, have the ability to bypass or something to make it safer, it would be appreciated.
Okay, appreciate the comment.
That motion anyways, I don't know about the other ones. If going north is a problem, I don't know.
It's the same with Notre Dame though. I mean, they got a right turn lane going north, and they don't have any right turn lane going east. So that's another problem. I mean, you guys go to Potomac, so you don't notice the problem, but...
When they're turning left to go south?
To the school, the schools there.
You got a school and a church there, nothing.
Yeah, they pass in that right turn lane too.
I think it was said that they couldn't get the right-of-way because the individual who owned the property was...
It was as traveled road, so it was...
Incarcerated, was the reason.
Okay.
Incarcerated, oh.
Yeah.
So anyways, anything you can do on those would be appreciated.
Okay, appreciate the comment, we'll look at that. So similar schedule on this one. It's 2019 H-SIP funds. We'll finalize the plans this year, acquire the necessary right-of-way. So as you can imagine, there's a lot of right-of-way we need to acquire along that corridor. A lot of the corridors, you know, some of it was platted, so there's 50 feet, maybe 55, 60 feet of right-of-way in some spots. Other areas, it's prescribed easement. So, in those cases, we'll be trying to clean that up, and we'll have to acquire the 60 feet that we need. So, that could be an involved process. But, we'll start that here in 18, finish it up in early 19. And we'll receive bids here late 18, early 19 with construction in 19. Again, cognizant of that.
So does that mean they go through and rip up all the culverts and all that stuff again? I mean, some of them, they replaced in the last, I don't know, five years, two years.
Yeah.
Those that all get ripped up again and widened?
Any of the good ones would stay. So if there are any that are in poor shape, because naturally with shoulder widening, we're going to have to extend some of those culverts. So if they're in poor shape, we'll have to replace them.
Would that be road closure then from Broadway?
It may be, or it may be a flagged operation where we close one lane, and then we flag the other lane, and vice versa. They try and do it in a one-day process. All depends on traffic.
So, we saw, just on another note, on Lake Drive, we saw things looking at flagging. So was it Anoka County's equipment that had the automated flagman on Lake Drive yesterday or the day before?
Ooh, I don't, that I'd have to check on.
It wasn't Anoka County, yeah.
Was it Anoka County?
They cleared it right-of-way of some trees there, about a quarter mile, half mile. And they had two of the automated arms.
Oh.
With a stop sign, a slow sign, and a gentleman sitting out to the corner operating them.
Okay.
So they got rid of two $18-an-hour girls, got $100,000 worth of machine.
Girls or guys, right?
Excuse me, girls or guy? $100,000 worth of machine and a $32, $40-an-hour guy operating it, so.
Progress.
That's progress, yeah.
Yeah, I'll have to look into that. I didn't even know we had that piece of equipment.
Nice piece of equipment, it's...
Yeah. I don't know if a lot of you heard, but this past year, it was, I want to say it was back in April or May, we had a flagger on one of our projects get hit by an inattentive driver. She luckily made it, but she was seriously injured. The individual that hit her, hit her at 55 miles an hour, didn't even see her, didn't slow down. So it was pretty horrific. But luckily, she made it. It sounds like she's going to be walking again, so, yeah. Having those type of systems is a benefit. Okay, now for the good stuff. County Road 23, the roundabout here. So, as you guys are well aware of, we're working through some issues with the interpretation of the LRIP language. And, so, we looked at ways that, you know, if we can get authorization to spend the LRIP dollars on acquiring right-of-way, at least along 23, we could get that project started, knowing that we're working on the design of the realignment of 54, the new realignment. So what we've done is we broke that project out, basically severed the two projects right at the south side of that roundabout on 23. Nothing has really changed to the design, the improvement along 23, other than we just severed the project to get this one done. We were hoping that we would have had authorization to use those funds and acquire that right-of-way by now. We're still working on that though. So, this project, as it sits right now, it's likely going to be a 19 project, similar to probably what you guys are thinking with Hornsby. So, that's kind of the details there. You guys have any questions on this one right now, or any thoughts, or?
So that's going to go in, and the traffic's still going to come over by Holiday there?
Yeah, so, our plan is, it's hard to see it on this map, but there's a faint...
Bypass lane?
There'll be a bypass lane both directions.
Yeah, we saw that at the meeting.
So we're going to keep 23 open the whole time. And yeah, you would have, we're still working out the details here with access to Holiday, whether or not we allow them to come out of, you know, come out of here, knowing it's as close to this intersection as it is. We're working on those details. We'll work with Holiday or Circle K on how that pans out. But, yeah, this access currently is going to remain open, along with this access.
Okay, and then, the development that may end up happening in this area here? Is that, would that have the same right-in, right-out, or full access? If it developed in the meantime?
It would, what we'd prefer is, until such time that the city builds this package road, we would allow only a right-in, right-out.
But yet, Holiday has both?
Holiday has a three-quarter here.
Right.
And then, once MINDOT's project is complete, this will be completely secluded from a full access. That'll be a, I think currently, it's a right-out only. But I think people come out of there and they may veer west. I'm not sure what they do right now, but this, there'll be a median along here. So there'll be a left turn lane into, for westbound 23, there'll be a left turn lane into Holiday, and there'll be a median cutting off westbound movement out of this access.
So if you're coming this way, you could go to Holiday, but to go, continue going this way, you'd have to go around and go around?
Correct.
Yeah, that's going to be frustrating.
Yeah.
And the same thing would apply to anyone who built up here? If someone came, say if they came this way, they could go in, but they couldn't go back? To go out, how would they go out?
Well, actually, so, the way this is set up, so this is a three-quarter for the entrance into Holiday. If someone built here, if they wanted to get in there on an eastbound movement, they'd have to go past, and come back, and get in there.
You can't go through the diamond, the diverging diamond won't let you turn around though.
Yeah, it won't let you turn around. I don't think you, I don't think they allow you to make a U-turn at that.
Right, they don't, usually.
Or you got to hit the roundabout, Dave, and hope there's a road there.
61, you got to go all the way to 61 and then around the roundabout.
You could go to QuickTrip then.
No, I mean, this roundabout...
No, you're already past it. You're past it, you want to keep going.
Yeah, so for an eastbound movement, they'd come through, that's where it'd be nice to have that package road, you'd have the access. It's just too difficult, because you're, right here is where they start developing that diverging diamond. So, developing those medians there, it'd be, it's impossible to get another access point in here and have...
That's why I asked before about this road here. I know you're going to be putting in the temporary bed, and you already have wetland easements and stuff, but it would sure have been nice if that road could have been left there for us, so that we could have a jumping-off point to build that package road, because that's going to be an expensive road, if we have to go through everything you're doing to put back. And I don't know if that was, I thought we were too far into it at the point.
Yeah, a big difference there is, so, our impacts to these wetlands in this area are considered temporary, so we don't necessarily have to mitigate for those. Now, if we come in here and we leave that there, becomes a permanent impact, and then we get into mitigating that.
Can't you go to the state bank and just get some banking credits for that somewhere?
Lot of money. Yeah, a lot of money. For instance, so on the previous design of the realignment, I think we were impacting, don't quote me on this, but it was around three acres to four acres of land. To mitigate those wetlands was almost half a million dollars. So, it's an expensive, it's an expensive deal.
So with that in mind, that our city is never going to be able to develop that road. If it's a half a million dollars now, it would be way more than that by the time we get around to it.
Depends on how much impact it is, yeah. I wouldn't say you couldn't develop it, but I'm sure there'll be wetland impacts there.
Yeah. Okay?
Okay. Want to jump ahead to that? Any other questions on this slide while we're here?
The only question that's been kind of looming here is this entrance here. When it comes to people shortcutting, when this does go through, how will this be not a shortcut when this is a cul-de-sac here? How will this be not the shortcut to get around this roundabout to get down? I know that's been a concern of mine, because I think if people are allowed to go, have to go out that way to go, to go west, then it's going to be tough to restrict the traffic not using it as a shortcut.
So, yeah, you're worried about people coming from the south, going north, wanting to go east on 2897, they're going to come this way.
Yeah, let's do that, or the shortcut to go down to, I don't know, they'll always find the shortest way, you know?
Yeah, and I don't know how we'd stop someone from doing that. My opinion would be, if it was me in a car, if you want to do that, you're going to have to slow down for a right turn, come along this at a slower speed, come into here, and wait for traffic here.
Yeah.
I would prefer to just stay on the road. You got, you don't have a stop, you come all the way up to the roundabout.
The typical thing I believe they do is they just make it so narrow that people don't like to do it. Like I know they make entrances to businesses narrow, so people slow down, they don't cross the sidewalk too fast, so.
Except in that case, Dave.
It's pretty wide.
Yeah, but the trucks...
Oh, yeah.
The trucks coming out of Holiday are going to have to come back way to come back up to go west.
Yeah, the 18-wheelers.
One thing you could do there too, is if it is an issue, Holiday starts complaining about it, you could always sign that. You could always sign that, this is not a cut-through, and that type of thing. It'll all depend on if it actually is an issue, so.
I'd like to see more done for Holiday. I mean, if you're going westbound, you really can't stop for a few, because you can't get back on the road. I mean, you're kind of eliminating probably a third of their business, I would think, or a quarter of their business.
Most of that business is probably coming in to go on the highway anyways.
Yeah, I know, I said a quarter, so I'm sure, maybe that, maybe not.
The rest of us that use it will find our way out the back way.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, so now we'll get into the 54 realignment. So we've been working with city staff diligently on this. We had a meeting yesterday to discuss items, concerns, where we're at with design. You saw probably several meetings ago where we came in with the new realignment design, and at that time, there was a roundabout in this location. That was in there, and we just really wanted to get an alignment approval from you guys. That's all we asked for that, that meeting, because we hadn't fully vetted if this met warrants, if a roundabout would meet warrants at this location. So, since that time, we've had SEH, one of our engineers, that's helping us out with the Intersection Control Evaluation Report. We had them reanalyze this intersection since that time. And so, as you can imagine, the old alignment going along the east side of Running Aces and the west side of these other businesses, changing it to this location and keeping it on 54 further north, drastically changed the traffic forecast and what traffic would be using this intersection. So, before, it met warrants for a four-way stop. Roundabouts, there is no formal warrant for a roundabout, but typically, what designers will use is, if it meets for a four-way stop, it's a good time to consider a roundabout. In this case, this intersection, as it's designed, looking at what remains here as far as developable land, it doesn't meet warrants for an all-way stop. So it really doesn't meet warrants for a roundabout, and that's the stance we're taking on it. We looked at what this would be if it developed. We looked at, I believe it was retail, we looked at that as retail for the higher volumes coming out of there, and it still didn't meet, so.
Okay, so...
You go.
I'm going to argue that. Okay, we got a dead-ended roundabout over here, going to nowhere on 97. I mean, Dave was concerned about, the mayor's concerned about that. But then we get down here, we've got one of our landowners here already has interest in purchasing this property, and their big concern is that there's a roundabout and a way to get to it. So, I don't see, I mean, I disagree. I think this is going to get developed. I think the traffic flow is going to be, is going to be much greater here than you guys maybe are anticipating. I mean, we already know that supposedly down in Lionel, there's 811 houses going in there, and one-third of that traffic's going to come north to go south on 35W. So, I don't know what they're looking at, but the stuff we're hearing is much greater than that, and I think there should be a roundabout there. I mean, we don't put one there now, now five years, so now we're going, gee, that was stupid. Why didn't we fight for a roundabout? And this whole road, purchasing the property, and I know there's a money problem down at the state right now, they'll straighten that out, I'm sure. But, this road going through the way it was, was going to be much more expensive than the way it's going, the route it's going now. And to put a roundabout in there now, in anticipation, I think would be a, if not done, is going to be a big mistake, so.
So you're saying there's a, there's a potential buyer of this parcel?
There's two potential buyers that I know for that piece of property right now. And their concern was is the roundabout, so.
And a second, I agree with Bill. I mean, if, the alignment here, I don't know if the snap doesn't have the wetlands like we got. So, your wetland impact here is minimized, going back to what you said before about the cost for the banking and whatever, is really minimized because we're really eating away at the high land that the city owns. And personally, I'd rather see the roundabout here with an, because when you get the roundabout, you can do more of an alignment, you can do more of a right turn, because you just stay in the roundabout longer. And then the road could come up more and save this high land here for the, you know, for the value of that land. I would really like to see the cost. I mean, if we donated the land to you, the wetlands, then you could save what you're going to spend on the high lands to buy some of the banking credits. You follow?
Yeah, I follow what you're saying. The thing right now is, and we got into a good discussion about this yesterday, is, so typically, when we come through and do a road project, you know, there's always a potential for development, but we don't, Anoka County's policy hasn't been to come in and build everything for the, what could happen. I mean, we designed roads to carry future capacity and so forth, but we're not going to put in a bunch of facilities for potential developers for being stewards of our taxpayers' dollars. We designed the roadway as such that it meets the warrants at today's levels for these intersection controls, and currently, it doesn't meet warrants. So if, with all that said, if the city were wanting to put a roundabout in there, it would be at city cost, because it doesn't meet warrants to put one in.
Except for, I want to argue that before, there was going to be a roundabout when it was up on the other road, okay? So now that, and it was all in the design plan supposedly with the monies that went down, it was coming from the state, which is held up right now because of some wording and something. So that roundabout was always going to be there on the corner of Running Aces' property, and now all of a sudden, I mean, the potential to get the money from the state's there, but now we're eliminating the roundabout, so where's the extra money going to go? I mean, you know what I'm saying? The road before was going to be much greater than it is now, and all of a sudden, we're eliminating a roundabout here, but we're not placing it here. So where's the extra money's going to go when it comes through?
Well, there's definitely a reduction in cost with this alignment, you're right. However, the traffic dynamics of this new design, before you had an entire roadway here, which is going from a county road to turn into a city road, and then you had an access point here, and that roundabout was going to control all the access points for all this developed property. Now you're looking at a completely different situation, and that met warrants, you're correct. That met warrants, because it had a higher traffic volume if all this land developed. Now we've changed that scenario and moved the roadway back to its original alignment, so now 54 is carrying the traffic and the access points. Other than this short road here, which I talked about, where we analyzed if that developed into a retail area with the higher traffic volumes, it still wouldn't meet warrants. So the change from this alignment over to here is kind of what is facilitating this not meeting the warrants anymore. Does that make sense?
No.
No?
No, because I don't see, I don't see the change. I mean, I still see this developable property here, the road is just in a different spot. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So we're leaving an intercept, we're, I just see it coming down the pipe.
If there was a road that went up here, and picked up this stuff and that, you know, wherever else you can get, it would then probably meet the, it'd be then effectively the same amount of area. Because I think what he's saying is mainly that if there's no roundabout that has to feed this huge piece here, the racetrack, then a lot of the warrant goes away.
A lot of the warrants that were there, so when we did our ICE evaluation, our Intersection Control Evaluation, we looked at the impact that this roadway coming into the roundabout would have on it. So that's what met warrants, because you're taking all the traffic volume that would be generated in this industrial area, commercial area, retail area, if it was developed out, and putting it on to that point. You're putting it all onto one point. Whereas now, that we're staying on the existing alignment, the access is still off the existing 54, so you're not having a point placement of all that traffic. So that's the major difference, is you...
It is, but I believe this is a median going down there?
That's a median, correct.
Right, so anything that does develop off of this is a right-in, right-out, and anybody who wants to go home has to find someplace to turn around. And the only place they can turn around would be is at that roundabout. So what you've done is taken away the ability to use the right-in, right-outs to really go back to where you came from. So, I don't know, is if it, if it's going to help the land develop?
Well, I think they're assuming that all the traffic there is going to feed off old 54 going into the Holiday down on the bottom.
Anything that came out of here, if this got split up into smaller pieces or even one access, how are people, without a full interchange along here, or unless everybody, all this had to develop off of that stub road?
My guess is, if this starts to get sold off or developed, and they go to the county, the county's going to say no, because it's too close to the intersection.
Yeah, they're going to give you a right-in, right-out, right?
No, they're not going to give you anything.
No, they'll give you a right-in, right-out, won't they?
To answer some of that question, so yesterday during our meeting, that, this exact situation came up, these discussions were had, and we talked about it at length. So what we've done is, similar to the other design where we're along Running Aces' property here, we have provided the southbound three-quarter access into this parcel. So, if you're heading south on the new 54, there will be a left turn lane to get into this property.
Well, there will be. It's just not coming up on the drawing.
It's not on this drawing, is there a different drawing?
Right here, it's on this drawing.
Oh, this drawing?
Yep, so that's a revision we made yesterday afternoon and this morning.
So there's a left turn in, but not a left turn out?
Correct.
Yes, you couldn't go south.
And that's because, per our access spacing guidelines for Anoka County, on this type of road, it's a minor arterial. Our access spacing for a full access is a quarter mile. That where we're showing this three-quarter access is less than an eighth of a mile. So we are making some concessions.
So, let me, so Bill, is it my place to say who showed interest in wanting that roundabout?
No, no.
I mean, I'm not sure where you're going with that, so, I don't know how to answer that. I think what you're, the council advocating for is exactly where we were before the road alignment changed, which is to have three-quarters access into the city property. And that's, I think, it sounds like the county heard the city, because that's an absolute must. I mean, we've always partnered on this project, and we've always had three-quarter access, and we didn't want to lose that.
Yeah, and so you guys have that now. I will admit, we can't develop a northbound three-quarter access to this parcel here just because of the nature of having the left turn. to this future city street. There's no way we could develop a three-quarter similar to what we're doing for southbound.
Which to me would indicate that then this roundabout, or potential roundabout, just like the one on 97, unfinished, you know, roundabout to nowhere, maybe you could call it, would have to be there because we can't do the other, farther up, you know what I mean? Like you just explained. So the only way to access this would be there.
Well, the nice thing here is, so this, this property is, with this three-quarter access, this property is now, has full access, basically, if you think about it. Because if, let's say you've got an individual coming south on 54, they just came through the roundabout, they want to access this parcel. Now you have a left turn in, you can access that whole parcel.
How do you get out?
The way you get out?
You just take a right out.
Use the roundabout. If you want to go south on 54, just like in several other areas, like in the city of Stock Rapids, for example, they have, I think they have a corridor with now five roundabouts on it. And what people are doing is, you don't, we have medians across there. In most locations, there's one area that has a two-way left turn lane. But what they've learned to do is, if they're coming in in the middle of a block, they'll go down to the roundabout, go all the way around it, go 360 degrees, and come back around the other way.
And that's, that was the discussion with Holiday over a year and a half ago, when they had a concern about that access point. Is that people heading out could use the roundabout to change direction.
Yep.
That was one of the reasons Doug and I talked about putting the roundabout there, is to allow trucks make that. I mean, Doug says, well, you can just do a U-turn at that, at a stoplight. I'm like, 18-wheelers not doing a U-turn at a stoplight. So, that's kind of where this roundabout came from, so. I don't know.
It sounds, it sounds like the council's still, someone has concerns about it, putting another roundabout here. Per our reevaluation, I'd be happy to share that with you. It, because of the change, the change in traffic flow, we're, we're having access directly off 54, whereas before it was more of like a point load, if you can imagine that, it was all coming to one point at an intersection. That's what helped that intersection meet the warrants to put a roundabout in. That's no longer the case in this situation. You'll have access off of 54 for these parcels. You have access off this street for this parcel. You now have an access point off here. You don't really have that point load here at the intersection to warrant the, the roundabout.
So, so looking at your, your new diagram here with the, with that, I think it is that one. There's a lane that goes from here all the way down to here, an extra, so it's basically a three-lane road. If you include the turn lanes, turn lanes and medians, you're looking at almost a three-lane road the whole way. Wouldn't that being a two-lane road counteract the cost of this roundabout?
The reason for that, the reason for, no, do you mean just because of the width of the road?
Well, yeah, you have, you have right turn lanes. You have a right turn lane in, in here. You have a right turn lane all in here. It's virtually a, except for that little red area, an extra lane the whole way. Turn lane. So.
Is there a left turn lane?
Yeah, no, but it's, it's a lane. It's a lane mile. So if, if this was a roundabout, couldn't that just be a two-lane road with right-in, right-outs? And, and then people could do the old turnaround between there? Whatever happens to develop along this, between here would then have the ability to do the, the old U-turns. I'm, I'm just saying, it seems like it's a whole lot of lanes for, in lieu of the roundabout. Where the roundabout might be cheaper with not having all those turn lanes. Because you wouldn't need, well, I don't know, Bill, I don't know if you guys, Danny, you were at these meetings. If they talked about, if these were, if you didn't have right-in, right-out access here, people could just come down here and turn around and go in and then go home? I mean, was that discussed?
I, I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
So i, if this didn't have this three-quarter access, if this was just a median the whole way and people came around here and turned around and went in here and then they came out, they would make the maneuver to go right out? I, I don't know. Would that be, would that be a compromise?
Yeah, the one thing to consider too though is, so you have a very low-volume access point here. So you'd be slowing down all the through traffic for a low-volume here for that benefit for an access here, which we've addressed with this three-quarter access point now. So you'd be putting in a roundabout. The benefit of the roundabout would be somewhat diminished by all the through-traffic now has to go through a roundabout and slow down. So that's one thing to consider when you're designing a roundabout is, what are your, what are your side-street volumes as well? In this case, it's very low. Majority of your volume is on 54. Like I pointed out earlier, it doesn't, doesn't meet the warrants for an all-way stop. So it's really a, it's a side-street stop condition. So putting a roundabout in there, you're slowing down through traffic.
Right, I, I agree.
For minimal, you know, minimal benefit.
And this may be a Dennis question, but I think for the city, the city property to develop, the three-quarter access is better. Obviously, that's a recent revision than having a roundabout at the end of that road for, in that point. I mean, that's, that's my view, but I'm not an engineer.
I mean, it gets people in there quicker as you're heading south. The exiting part is the, they gotta go up to the roundabout and come back.
But you're going up, you're going north to a roundabout to come back, as opposed to going south to a roundabout to come back. Because if, if we do the roundabout, then perhaps the three-quarters gone.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody got anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Those are the projects.
Appreciate the comments, guys.
Yeah.
So one more slide that I want to point out, just kind of give you a rundown of where the county's at with this project. So, as I mentioned, actually, if you go back one, Elizabeth, I just want to point this out. Thank you. So, as you guys know, our project would end here, kind of midway between the two entrances and Holiday. As it sits right now, if we, if we don't get the authorization to spend the funds to acquire the right-of-way and start this project in 18, it turns into a 19 project. Based on my knowledge of the schedule of MnDOT's project, this will also be under construction in 2019. So it's gonna create, it's something that we're gonna have to deal with. I just want to get this out on the table so everyone knows that it may cause issues with how we stage our project as well. So right now, we're installing that bypass lane, the two bypass lanes, to keep this open at all times for traveling public, for Running Aces, for all these businesses and landowners along here. If, if this comes in first, it's gonna change a lot of things. So just so everyone's aware. Doesn't mean we're shutting down 23, but I just want everyone to be aware. That's kind of some of the sticking points we're looking at.
Just to verify, I can ask a question. When's the kind of drop dead on that decision? How soon is that coming?
Basically, so we have, if we get right-of-way acquired as fast as we can, which is typically six to seven months, I mean, that's really, really pushing it. That would put us, so if we had authorization today to spend the money, you, you project out time, you're looking at August, if you could acquire everything. So then you let the project, you get federal authorization, or not federal, you get authorization from state aid to award the project. You bid it, let it, you award it in October, it's a 2019 project. So already, it's a 19 project.
So you've already passed, you've already crossed that?
Yeah. Now, if it goes later than that, one of our concerns is gonna be, this full access point for 54 would be severed. It'd basically become a right-in, right-out county road. Because they need to develop that median here.
So who's at the state negotiating the money issues, Bill?
The county is taking the lead. We've supported it. There's a letter from the city with some well-developed points. I just don't know, you know, why there hasn't been any more progress. But it, it sounds like we've already crossed the, you know, the deadline for this year.
But they're gonna go back into session now, right?
Oh, you mean that, yeah. That's really up to the county and the city to decide whether you want to go back and try and clarify the law. It sounds easier than it is, because if, if there isn't a bonding bill, then where do you clarify the law?
I thought it already went to the top of the people who define the words and we lost.
Yeah, we received a notification that the commissioner of MMB, Minnesota Management and Budget, that he did receive all of the support documentation and our request. They're still analyzing it at this time, so. And Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, so if we want to change the language from the previous, Bill, what does that process look like? I mean, I know that's something we're planning on doing.
Yeah, you could do it as a standalone bill, but the chances of that moving are much better if there's actually a bonding bill to clarify the prior bonding bill. And that becomes a political football and runs out through, usually a bonding bill runs out to the end of the session. It's, you know, one of the last three or four big bills that decided that in the third week of May. So, it's just kind of a lot like the process that we just went through with the county in the lead. So it's a question whether anybody thinks that a kind of a single-line clarification bill finds its way through the process, as opposed to being part of a large bill.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
Oh, that's it. I appreciate your time.
Hey, thanks for coming tonight.
Oh, one more thing?
Appreciate it.
I wasn't gonna talk about any of these projects for my update, but could you give a brief update on additional funding for Hornsby?
Oh, yes, yes. Thank you for bringing that. So some good news. We do have good news tonight. Not always a bear or bad news. So, working with state aid, they did find an additional pot of money so that we can allocate funds to do the engineering of Hornsby's realignment. So what that's gonna include is, we put in an application for older LRIP money that wasn't used up by a previous project. And then we have to go do a competitive bid process, that's part of the requirements of that funding, for the engineering services. So the county will take the lead on that, we'll be the sponsor on it. And we'll put out an RFP for a best-value contract with a design consultant. So, that's the next step, but that's good news.
Dollar value?
I mean, using a hundred thousand dollars, plus or minus 20%.
Yeah. So we'll probably ask for 120 just to cover, cover the cost. So that's a benefit. That's a good thing.
It's good.
Thanks, guys.
Let me ask you one more question.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Conner Road 62, Catlboro Boulevard, north of Broadway. That road, it's, in my opinion, is in very rough shape. There's no shoulder. Is there any plans of doing with that?
We were looking at doing that one either this year or next year. It's still on our list. We're not doing it this year. We're actually gonna hit up 140, which is in terrible shape. I know you guys were just talking about that before the meeting. We're gonna, we're gonna go all the way from 54 over to the county line. We're gonna straighten that thing out. That's in poor shape. So we chose to do that one this year. That's been low-hanging fruit for a long time. We'll get that one this year and likely next year will be the 62.
Like, yeah, that road in Wyoming is horrible. Breaking up all on you.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thanks. All right, next up, we have a planning commission report. Who do we have for that? Oh, they didn't meet. That's right. Okay, looking for a board of equalization date.
We are.
April?
So looking at the agenda, the board of equalization has to be between two specific dates. And so it has to be between April 13th and May 10th. Generally, it's not on a city council night, and we have to give the county two dates of our choice.
It's best to get that done a little bit early in case there's problems, so.
And right now, they're saying April 26 is an exception. That's the only year that they're not available.
April 26. So we usually do these on a Tuesday? Is that what we've done, or is it a Monday?
I was just gonna say, I, either on Monday or Tuesday, so whatever you decide is.
Yeah, I'd probably rather see a Monday, but. April, what was the first date? April 13th?
Um, April, they must fall between the dates of April 13th and May 10th and not on April 26.
How about the 16th? Have they gone or anything?
Following week, same week as the council meeting, in case somebody's gone.
Oh, make it the 23rd. Oh, yeah, that's probably a good idea.
So, um, April, April 23rd did you say?
Sure. That's on, it's good to me.
And then, and then a second date? Is that April 24th?
No. May, April, well, we'd have a meeting on the 7th, right, of May?
Uh, we would have a meeting on the 9th.
9th, yeah, the week of the 7th, so it was, so May 7th, is that all right? Okay. Okay, public open forum? Is anyone here for public open forum? Something that's not on the agenda?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Byron Westland from Woodland Development, where the development company owns Pryners Preserve. It's come to our attention that we don't have any snow plowing services from the city. And we, we've obviously final plotted this project. We've got four houses under construction. We have two homes that will be going into the spring parade of homes. So we'll be trying to draw people into our subdivision. So we're asking if there'd be some consideration to allow for snowplowing by the city. We are in a development contract. There's plenty of money in escrow. In other cities, what we do with this is, the city usually plows it upon our completion. I shouldn't say them, but upon, when we want to put the second lift on, we do an inspection. We look at our concrete curbs, any cross gutters and things like that. And if they need to be repaired or replaced, they're done before the second lift is put in, so.
Okay, I think I, I heard, heard about this. And JW, do you have, you had some concerns about not knowing where the snowplow blades are gonna hit the manhole covers and the curves and things?
Well, I, I looked at it a little bit today, and it looks like they added some asphalt around gate valves and manholes, at least the ones that I can see. So that looks okay, but there are, I mean, there are some small companies on there, so I, I have this, and they're all the same. There is a spool of wire and some stuff in the road that would have to be moved before a good plow. But, I mean, there's nothing saying that we can't. I just haven't been directed to.
Okay.
A little additional history was that in the developer's agreement, until the project has a final inspection and is it accept, and is accepted as such, that transfer of the streets and utilities don't take place until that occurs, and that has not been done yet. This had been discussed previously with, with the applicant. And because there were so many fixes that needed, that were done late in the fall, sanitary sewer had to be repaired, some street paving, patching was done. So it was discussed that the city would not be plowing the streets this first winter. That's not to say the city can't decide to do so. But if you decide to do so, then any damage that would occur, because you have that edge of gutter later, would be the developer's responsibility.
Well, let me ask you this. Bill, maybe this question to you. A person can't plow a street, right? I mean, I can't put a plow on my truck and go plow a street. Once they hit the street, I gotta raise my plow. So how would he hire someone to plow the street when you're not allowed to?
The, the way it works in a development setting, and this is in our development agreement, the maintenance of the streets are the responsibility of the developer until we accept the. And the reason for that is the manholes can be exposed, as, as we've described. And so typically, as, as Byron said, typically the city will not accept those improvements until they're final. But arrangements can be made. And the arrangement I'm thinking about is we plow Heidelberg under an indemnification agreement. And that was something we just worked out, I think, in the last 12 months.
But we turn that into a private road or into a, that's not a public street, is it?
The short answer is the developer can and does, under the subdivision agreement, plow the, the streets. Other arrangements can be made, as, as have been described here. But the standard language in our contract for 20 years is that responsibility belongs to the developer until we accept the, the improvements. So the filing of the plat, transfers the right-of-way. And then when the final lift is on and it's all inspected, then we officially accept the improvements.
Okay.
And I, I understand that. And I think the exception though is, as we're waiting, probably a lot of the cities do the same thing, though, is they, we cannot put the second lift on until after one freeze-thaw period as well. So we're complicating that when we have to do that, so.
We're not, and we're not saying there isn't a way to do it. This is, this is different than our standard practice. And the, and the key issue is the liability for damage to what will be public improvements. And I think if we have a couple-page indemnification agreement with the developer, then we've covered that issue. And it sounds like Public Works can do the work, so it's just, it's a, it's a alteration from our standard practice. We can cover it with a, a couple-page document and it's up to you as the council to, to direct that.
Okay, and JW, you don't think that's a big deal? I mean, after looking at it?
It's no different than any other road at this point. It's just, it ultimately isn't turned over to the city yet, so.
All right, what does council think? Jeff?
I think we're taking a lot of liability. It's a bad idea, but.
Bill?
I mean, if JW's okay with it, I mean, we can take a lighter piece of equipment in there. We don't need to use, unless the snow is heavy, we don't need a big piece to. We don't need, unless the snow is heavy, we don't need a big piece to.
Well, I mean, it's obviously most effective to do it that way. Otherwise, we're going to plow it to pick up stables, what he would be plowing it at that point, so, I mean, you're going to do a better job with a dump truck.
Right. Mark?
Is there any possibility of damaging our equipment if he's got something sticking up?
Well, yeah, I mean, if a manhole was sticking up and you were cranking through there, yeah, you could cause some damage, but, I mean, we don't plow like that, so.
Well, they hit enough mailboxes that the damage is done anyways.
My only concern is the property of the city. Otherwise, I don't have a problem with plowing it if we could write something up.
Danny?
I don't have a problem with plowing, just write an agreement up.
Yeah, I agree with you, so, so am I going to make a motion to one effect or another?
Sold.
So, well, it's a motion to write up an agreement and.
Write up an agreement to, and then we'll take it from there if everybody.
It'll, it'll have indemnification in there if there is some damage?
We drafted something for Heidelberg, so we'll use that. It won't be any great pains to do that, and.
And that'll come out of the developer's agreement, the cost to do that?
Yeah, it'll be, again, a big couple hours' work, so.
Okay, well, that's a lot of money. All right.
This will be charged back to the developer.
Yeah, I get that. So do you have a second for the motion? Okay, I think Teddy said it first. Sorry, Bill. All right, any other discussion?
What if it snows tonight? I think that probably got started here.
Always got to complicate it, don't you?
Paul Hupner says we're in a dry socket.
Yeah.
If it snows tonight, would the motion maker want to direct him to plow? I think you made the motion.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, any other discussion?
And just a comment on that, if there's any before this agreement's signed up, we would fall back on the escrow and the provisions of the subdivision agreement, so this is just an added, you know, to clarify.
Said like a lawyer.
Said like a lawyer.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you.
One opposed? Thank you. Okay, any other one else for public open forum?
My name is Susan Albertson, and I live at 178th and Shingu in Columbus. So I was wondering if I could just read you something real quick, so I don't mean to pussyfoot around here, but this will lead to the question and the concern. So, and this is to do with guns and people firing them off. So this gentleman, who he says he's with the military, says, "I asked the question, how far does the bullets go?" And he says, "Well, it goes a lot further than what you could see." And he continues to say, "So unless you want bars on your windows, have a good backstop." So in just 24 hours, I've looked at some of these things up, and the distance of some of these bullets are just crazy, like handguns travel .25 ACP, 3,300 feet. 44 MAG travels 7,000 feet. Rifles can travel up to 5.25 miles, unobstructed, of course. And I know there's physics in it and weather and temperature and where your gun is pointed, up or down. My concern is literally when I step outside my door in the summer, there's nothing but gunshots going off, and I know it's state law that people are allowed to fire their guns as long as they are 500 feet away from the structure. Well, in my neighborhood, people have anywhere from two and a half acres to 40 acres for their horses. But people are firing off guns in the middle of their land, right? So they may be 100 feet from their house and 300 feet from my house, and nothing stops, so then I call the sheriff, and, you know, for my own safety, I guess that's my main concern, is literally I'm outside Saturday night, 8:30 at night, pitch black, and there's gunfire. And they're blowing shit up. I mean, something big enough to shake my house. But the sheriffs literally say that there's nothing they can do, so they actually suggested I come here. And I mean, I'm not against guns, by no means. I want people to be able to protect themselves, but then again, I don't want to have to spend my summer inside the house like I did last year, for real. I'm not kidding, because it was happening all the time.
So do you have a particular neighbor who is being obsessed? I mean, a lot of people shoot.
Everybody there has guns.
Yes, but I mean, some people shoot a lot. I mean, I have people shooting guns all around me. Is it someone who's being careless, or, I mean, we had an issue, and I don't remember if it was your issue, but someone, some kids were taking an AR and plinking, not knowing how far the bullets go, and the sheriff.
Yeah, they seriously go a long way. In fact, I think that's the one that, unobstructed, goes 5.25 miles.
Right, so.
As a military.
Right, so, I mean, I mean, we've, this issue's come up before, and the councils, the past has always redirected back to the sheriff's department going, if there's somebody using a gun in an unsafe way, that's a crime. So as far as.
But in the neighborhood, you can't really truly see a crime. You can't see where the gun is being, I mean, I mean, some of these things, I was, I'm literally just learning this. I do a county for a living, don't know nothing about guns, never had one, but literally, they, from start to finish, they fire in and hit their target in less than a second and a quarter, depending on how far the distance it is. You know what I mean? So you literally, unless you are standing there watching a person, you don't know what direction they're firing, you don't know what their intent is, I mean.
We had, we had people come in here and sitting in the same spot with, with holes in their pole buildings. You know, that, that was dangerous and unnecessary and illegal.
I moved in, one of the neighbors got drunk and pissed off and started firing his gun at a neighbor's dogs. And of course, I have SWAT coming down my driveway all in black at 8:30 at night. I had nightmares about that for two years. So is, I guess my question is, can we just extend it? Can we make it 1,000 feet? Where does this arbitrary feat of 500 come in when there isn't a bullet out there that only travels 500 feet? And I mean, I'm talking 500 feet, like 1,500 feet, person, military guy in a handgun will kill you, and you will have a second and a quarter to duck. You know what I mean? If there's, if there's malice, I mean, or, or even an accident, like you say, somebody's shooting a bird, I don't know. I don't know.
I don't know, council, I mean, we talked about this before.
Well, they're, they're shooting within 100 feet of their residence, they're committing a crime, and they should be addressed.
Not according to the sheriff. I've called them five times since I've lived here in.
500 feet.
Yeah, 500.
You said 100, but if they are.
I meant 500, 500.
Right.
But I'd say, no, she said 100, within 100 feet.
Right, that would be, that'd be a crime.
I know I've seen that. I've literally seen that. I had a young kid that is two houses down from us that literally has been firing within 100 foot of two houses.
Is your question more, if you're on two and a half acres, should you be able to shoot a gun?
Nope. My question is, can we, can we extend it? And, and this was the sheriff telling me to talk to you guys. Can we extend it to 1,000 feet? He didn't ask me to ask that. I asked him to ask that, but he said to come and talk to you.
I, I, first off, I, I thought the 500-foot rule was only, I'm not a hunter, but I thought the 500-foot rule was only for hunting? I don't know whether it's hunting or just pleasure shooting, and it's.
I think it's any, any personal weapons within 500 feet of occupied buildings.
Yeah, you can, you can, and that's the statute for the state of Minnesota, is it can be any weapon for any purpose. I mean, other than killing your neighbor. If you have a target practice and you have a backboard, you can fire it, but you don't even really need a backboard. Nobody's saying statually you have to have a backboard in order to fire that. Literally, if you're aiming at a tree or a, you know, aiming at a can on a tree, if that bullet travels and hits a, hits a horse behind you, you know.
That's a cer, that's someone who wasn't trained in a handgun.
Huh?
That's someone who wasn't trained in the discharge of a firearm.
You know, and there's a lot of that.
That's, and that's.
There's a lot of that, I mean, that's the whole problem. I mean, people aren't thinking logically. If you got drunk people shooting at dogs when, you know, they're mad because they bark, you know, and SWAT gets called in.
Well, using a handgun drunk is a big problem, so the sheriff should be able to take care of that, is what I'm saying. You can't be out shooting your gun drunk.
Yeah, they'll, they'll definitely look into that readily.
Well, they did. They had SWAT coming, I mean, he got his finger slapped, he didn't have anything happen to his guns, but.
Mr. Mayor and council, maybe two points. One is the city of Columbus and the township before that relied on state statutes, so the city has not enacted a separate code in this matter. So perhaps the best thing to do is to have a sit-down with the sheriff and say, to understand what, what they can enforce, what they need to enforce, what kind of evidence that, that they'll use to enforce, and so we can clarify on behalf of our resident when the sheriff can enforce and when the sheriff won't. Because it's obviously, it's something we're interested in in a community, is enforcing state law with regard to the discharge of firearms in a neighborhood, and if the, you know, it doesn't help us to, to point you back to the sheriff and then the sheriff points you back here. I think we can intervene a little bit and, and have a conversation with the sheriff to clarify when they, they would activate enforcement.
And I've tried that route for like five years, too. I mean, no disrespect to them at all, because they're just doing their job and obeying by law, but, so literally, their stance is, I can go and get them and ask them personally, are you the one doing this, and then charge them with the nuisance, because visually, we have to see. We can't just pretend that we know who it is. Even if they admit, I still have to see where they're standing. I have to.
Sounds like you've asked those questions.
Oh, my gosh, yes, but, I mean, literally, I'm asking you guys to do something for me, so I would certainly hope you do your due diligence, too.
I mean, my question, at the beginning of your comments, you said they were shooting all the time.
Oh, in the summer? Yeah.
So I, I would assume that if they're shooting for a long period of time, it's pretty easy to figure out where it's coming from.
And I'm sure he's gotten, he's, there's been sheriffs over the last five years.
So you know who's shooting.
Not all the time, though. I mean, that's just it. I've got a whole bunch of avid hunters out by me that actually just like to go out and fire guns. Maybe one of my direct neighbors, you know, is wanting to use my property to kill deer. I said, hey, I feed the deer, so I don't think you can do that, but.
So you don't, you don't know for sure someone broke the law and shot, discharged a weapon within 500 feet of your house?
No, but if it's 500 feet of any house, then yes.
Of your own, Bill?
Because, I mean, literally, if everybody's.
500 feet of your own house?
No, it's occupied.
Occupied.
So if you, you can't shoot within your own house, 500 feet?
I, I don't, I don't know that.
So can't shoot the TV when it don't work?
What you do in the, your own, your own, is up to your family.
So, okay, so, I mean, the council has never had a stance on eliminating guns in the city, because I think a lot of people in the city are gun advocates, but, but the safety of gun owners is always a concern of ours. If, and, and, no, I think that's a good idea. I mean, we can, we can have a discussion with the sheriff. If you have specific things about specific problems, I think that needs to be addressed to keep you comfortable in your own house, and it's a big deal to us.
Like, specifically, on Saturday night, it wasn't the gun so much, but it was this weird explosion afterwards that literally rocked and shook my house, which happens all the time. Maybe they're just massive fireworks, I don't know, but it's like.
Yeah, they could be shooting Tannerite or something like that, but.
Somebody else told me that, too.
Yeah, it's a, it takes a high-velocity rifle to.
Well, you can buy it.
Go to Fleet Farm and get it. It's, I, I used to have a guy next to me who actually used explosion, he had dynamite, and it, I mean, I'm a mile from the guy, and it shook my house, and he's no longer there, but it wasn't, yeah, it was a little bit nerve-wracking, yeah.
Also, there's, there's two kind of buckets of enforcement. One is criminal violation, and the other is public nuisance. And so to the extent that it becomes frequent, and you can document that, or it becomes loud and frequent, and you can document that, we do have the ability to, through our nuisance ordinances, bring an enforcement action. But it really always boils down to the evidence that you can bring, either to the sheriff's office or to the city. So it's, it's the same issue. Can you prove that somebody's being a nuisance or breaking the law?
Film it.
Yeah, well, yeah, some video of the, of the gun discharges, you know, when it's happening and how often it would be, because right now, you, I mean, if you made, created a log and kept that, then you could at least have some documentation that you could go to the sheriff and back to us with and say, then we could look at that and go, well, it was, it was once a month we're going to go, and that's not a nuisance. If it's four times a day for, you know, a half hour, we're going to probably go, yeah, that's probably too much.
I mean, I can start videoing the sound. I mean, I'm.
Yeah, and that's really all you can do, but.
I'm in, I'm in an obstructed area, but still, because I've got trees on all four sides, but nonetheless, it's still scary.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll actually make, we'll make a call to the sheriff and see what we can do. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, anyone else for public open forum? Okay, hearing nothing, I'll move on to organizational selections for next year. A1 of your package.
In your package, you have a handout of the selections for the organizational meeting. The items in red are the ones that we can discuss. We can actually discuss all of it, but the items in red, there are, there are issues that, so we need to be discussed.
Okay, so right now, we have TKDA. That's the first item.
So the first is the deputy mayor.
Deputy mayor. I have a different A1 than you have?
That's me.
That's Bill. Bill, done a fine job.
Are you renomiting him?
I'm, I would renominate, Bill.
I think we need to move the deputy mayor.
Do you want to move it around again?
Here we do.
We do move it around, but I don't know if everybody's had it. Anybody else here not at it? Danny, you were at it for a while.
Yeah, I had it for a year.
Jeff, you were at it for a while?
I was.
Mark, were you at it for a while?
I was before Bill.
Want to be deputy mayor again?
I could.
So probably your turn, actually.
All right, I'll do it.
What do you think, Bill? You all right with that?
I don't want to give it up to Jeff. I don't want it to get.
All right, well, you guys can arm wrestle later. So Jeff, put Jeff in again. Jeff, you were, I mean, it's been eight years, and you're my first deputy mayor.
Yeah, so it's been a while.
So it's been a while. I agree. Okay, depository, Wells Fargo, I've been trying to advocate to get rid of them for a while. Elizabeth, you have a plan?
I do. My recommendation is that we transition from Wells Fargo to US Bank over, over the 2018.
Okay, I think that'd be fine. You guys, any problem? Okay, legal paper. Forest Lake Times is now gone subscription. They still meet the subscription requirements to be a public notification, according to?
Yes, they do.
To them or to Bill? Who told us that?
They sent, they submitted the paperwork that, that shows that they are considered a legal newspaper.
I have one question, and, and maybe the paper can answer. They, they now charge for, for the paper, but yet they want to, they don't want to lower their rates to post in there, you know?
Yeah, they.
You don't, okay. It seems like you're trying to get paid to put it in there and paid to advertise and paid to sell it. It's like, it sounds like a business I might want to be in.
What other option we have, though?
Well, Elizabeth was looking into that.
Correct.
We do.
You have to have a legal.
We do.
Peach, everybody gets that free.
So what the, what the Forest Lake Times has offered is, yes, they've got subscription, but what they will do is if we designate the Forest Lake Times as our legal newspaper, they will publish it in the Peach for free. And the Peach goes out on Sunday, and that is not considered a legal newspaper, but they will publish it in the Peach. People in Columbus will receive it. They will put it up on their website and, and on their website, they have a non-subscription place where they put articles, so anybody can read articles, and they will also put it in that section. So anybody wanting to look.
We have a website too, so.
And it's also posted on our website. So they, they indicated that that's, that's what they will do if they're selected for the legal newspaper.
Okay, and what were your other options that you had?
The other option that we have here is the press. Their, their circulation is a little bit different. They too send out through the mail. I believe it's subscription also. And the others, the other is Pioneer Press.
Pioneer Press, which would probably.
Larger paper.
I wouldn't touch many people at all in Columbus.
Yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like staying with the Forest Lake Times might be the most prudent thing at this point. Anybody got any opinions on that?
When you put an illegal notice in the paper, do you have to, I mean, southeast by northwest by quadrant four, I mean, is that all gotta be put in there?
Legal description?
Yeah, I mean, couldn't you just put the address? I mean, it doesn't ever, he has the address. I can't even, I don't know what they're talking about when they're talking like that.
Well, you're talking for the foreclosures and makeups. We're talking about.
City of Columbus, last paper was, was two of them descriptions like that, and they're awful long.
They, they are awful long. Vacant land doesn't have an address, so the legal description is, is put in. The statute says that you have to identify the parcel, so we have used the legal description, PIN number and address so that we make sure that it's identified. You know, I can certainly review it with legal counsel to see if we could eliminate the legal description. For some reason, I think it actually says legal description in the statute for some reason. But if we can, if, if we can condense them, we will.
Any other comments from the councils? Jeff? Good, okay. All right, so it sounds like Forest Lake Times would be the, continue to be. So engineers, TKDA, now Elizabeth, shouldn't we be talking about the planner or?
We should.
Planner's retiring.
The planner is retiring in, in June. And we will have our comprehensive plan almost completed by that time. He is committed to completing the comprehensive plan, so if it goes beyond June, he will continue to work on that, so to make sure everything is submitted correctly. My suggestion and a recommendation is that second quarter, we go out for an RFP. We select certain planning groups and we interview, and the interview panel would be the council and myself, and we have them come in and make presentations before all of you. And then certainly we can ask the planning commission to attend so that we get some feedback from them after the presentation.
Okay, so I think I agree. You guys agree? Should be doing that?
Can we get somebody to talk, move it along as?
Never.
No, never.
I think the only one that could do that would be our previous engineer. Okay, and then civil attorney, you got that back? Yeah, civil attorney is Larkin Hoffman. Do you have any comments there? Okay, and then Joseph Murphy, you know, Elizabeth, he's the same guy, but with a different firm, right?
He is. He's transferred firms. Joe, Joe enjoys working on a contract. He'd like to be, you know.
Yeah, I think he's doing a good job.
I don't, I would recommend that.
Okay, I agree. Our auditor is Redpath and how much did we spend on that?
The audit is in the, in the range of $22,000.
Okay, I know Ken is retiring, but he's still on for a while, right?
I believe one year left on the contract.
Then we'll have to find someone else.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, and then Hillcrest Animal Hospital is no longer doing it, right?
Well, they wrote us a letter indicating that they are canceling our contract. And so we've kind of gone through some transition here. So many years ago, we had an animal control contract where we had an animal control officer, and he slowly got out of the business and there really wasn't a whole lot of options. And so we arranged with Anoka County through CSOs to, if we, if a dog was called in and it was a stray dog that we, and we arranged with Hillcrest to bring it there, and they provided impound services for us. So CSOs transferred the, transferred the dogs at Hillcrest and then either charged for redemption or adopted them out. My understanding is now they no longer are gonna provide that service. And I received an email, I have not had a chance to talk to Dog Control, but as you can see, he's indicated that he is now doing it for Andover Oak Grove. And now then, I have no idea what pricing is, but at this point, we'll have to look at finding a service unless the council feels you don't want any service, which I think would be rather difficult.
Well, why don't we just go with the, you know.
Well, yeah, it depends on what he charges, right?
Well, yeah, it depends on what he charges, but.
Yeah, we'll have to, you'll research that and.
Yeah, I could, I could certainly get charges, you know, for him and see what he charges or in addition to that, I can talk to other animal hospitals that have impound services if you still want to use the CSO impound service model.
Does that, how does that, how do they charge for that when the CSO does it?
It's in our contract.
Okay, so you'll have to get back to us and figure out the cost for the other guy. All right, data practices is Elizabeth, Elizabeth, deputy treasurer, Betty Cash. That's, who's that? That's Lori?
Let's be right now.
The deputy treasurer? You are?
I'm not, I'm the treasurer, but that's the position that's open.
Oh, okay, got it. Okay, and then we're looking at planning commission. Jody's term is up.
On the last page, you do have a letter from Jody Krebs requesting you to reappoint to the planning commission. There's only one seat up for reappointment.
How did that happen? Was this an off year or something? Cause of the five?
There's five, five people.
Was it one a year?
Two, it's two, two and one.
Oh, okay, so we're on the one year one, okay. All right, I think she does a great job. Recommend that we keep her. What do you guys think?
Fine.
Yep.
When you make a motion, you should probably pull this out, cause I got abstained.
Okay. Park advisory board, it looks like Andy is resigning?
Yes, we received, we received a letter from Andy that he, he served a three-year term and he is resigning from his.
Okay.
See, so we do, we will have an opening. We didn't know that until.
We can post that on the website and stuff? Okay, so we'll have to make a motion to accept that resignation? Should we just do that now? If you guys want to make a motion?
Motion to accept Andy Fraley's resignation letter?
Okay.
Second.
Second, all right. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Just take care of Jody Krebs now and then.
I suppose we could. Someone want to make a motion, cause we'll have to take that out, so it'd be easier to do that. So someone want to make a motion to accept Jody Krebs' reappointment?
Removed.
Boy, that was stereo.
I'll give it to Jeff. I'll take a second.
He's looking at Danny.
Danny got the second.
Jeff and I was kind of conversing back and forth.
Yeah.
You butted right in.
Well, we couldn't, we, I'll just say we couldn't find anybody that works harder. I'll give you that. All right, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Mr. Mayor, this is probably the point where you would, since we're doing commit, committee appointments, this would be where you insert the EDA.
Okay, so we'll insert the EDA. Now, we had, we have two openings. One is still vacant. We do have an application. I'm trying to let, let the person out right now, and I haven't had time to have a really long conversation yet, but, and then we just got notice that Tracy has withdrawn her application?
Yes.
So we'll have two openings, so.
They're six-year terms.
Right, so I guess this would be the time that we start talking about the EDA and the EDA's appointment and the EDA meeting time and the EDA's responsibilities, I guess, before we accept her resignation. We have to accept, we don't need to accept her resignation, cause he's just, her term ran out.
Remanded.
Right. So you guys have any other ideas on how to facilitate that meeting and get the goals done that's EDA? I mean, the EDA is there right now because of some legal reasons for the ability to do the EDA levy?
For the levy and you fulfill the requirement you had during your meeting.
Can we do that? Is it quarterly, biannually, twice a year?
Well.
Right, right now you're meeting quarterly?
Quarterly, yeah.
And, and you are required to have an annual meeting. That's what you did.
We just did, yeah. So I think, I don't know, it's an extra hour, it's hard for me to get here at six. I don't know about you guys, but I just made it here. I was five minutes late. Six, maybe six minutes late, but I drove straight from, straight from Chaska to get here. So it was, you know, it's tough for me to get here at six with traffic usually pretty tough. Go ahead, disrupt us.
I'm listening.
Okay, so I mean, I mean, is it, we could have our annual meeting during the city council?
You could.
Carve out?
They should be separate meetings, cause you're separate bodies, but you could adjourn the city council meeting at eight or nine and conduct the EDA business if you like.
It'd be tough if there was, for the two other people, but, cause they'd have to wait around for that.
So if you have a long meeting, now it's midnight.
Yeah, I know.
Well, who's the vice president? He'd just take over for you in the meeting you can't make. How many is it? Been a time every time so far. I should have it before the meeting. I don't want it to drag it out. Have it after the council meeting, it'd be too late.
Well, to Mark's point, Bill, can we act as EDA during the council?
No.
Not at all?
No.
So it's splitting hairs, I mean, it's the same people.
Same people, but it's, it's actually a separate unit of government.
With two at-large members?
Yeah.
What if we just did it twice a year and then if we required another meeting?
I'm okay with that.
As needed, yeah.
So what, we can, we can do this. Right now it's quarterly. If we need a meeting in April, we'll have it. If not, we'll meet for the budget meeting, which would be in June, July, and then, and then we wouldn't meet in November. Unless you find WVA to November.
Guess I'd be all right.
You could have economic development discussions regularly at the council, and then when you have action that's required, refer it back to the next EDA.
Okay.
Some of those discussions have started at the EDA, you know, regarding various quadrants under, up for sale.
Yeah.
And then continued at the city council, so.
We tend to have a meeting anyways if it's about a sale and some private information and so close meeting anyhow, so those close meetings are, not EDA, those are EDA close meetings, are they? City council close meeting, yeah. Okay.
It's a little more necessary when we had that land lease arrangement, but that was wiped out in the refinancing.
Right. Okay, so you guys all right with that? Move it to biannually and?
Or as needed, yeah.
It can't be or, it would be, can we just do as needed? I mean, one plus as needed.
If you want them scheduled, I think the suggestion is that they be quarterly, but you, with the idea that you'll likely be canceling two meetings a year.
And we have to post the ones we cancel within a certain time?
Because by having them posted quarterly, then if something comes up where you want business, it's already published and it's already posted.
I suppose. All right, we'll go with that. Okay, and then public works advisory board has, has stated there, that's, no changes Forest Lake Cable Commission is, Doug is, Doug's not doing that or is he still?
He is.
I thought he was stopping.
No, he's still going.
He's good? Okay.
This week, we decided to be tonight.
Okay. Now the back page, page two. The building liaison has been Danny and with Bill as alternate. And does that, I mean, Danny's always around, I mean, Bill, has that worked out for you?
No, Danny's fine, I mean, that's good.
I mean, it's worked out for you to be the alternate? I mean, you've never had to?
No, Danny's around.
Yeah. Okay, office liaison has been me. I come here every week anyway, it's not a problem. Joint fireboard meeting has been me and Mark right now, right?
Yep.
Jeff used to be on it, you still want to, don't want to be on it anymore?
No.
Okay, all right. Mark, you're okay with it?
Yep.
All right. I don't have any problems, that one's not too bad. Personnel committing has been me and Mark. Mark, you, how many things do you have? You have three?
Three and two alternates.
You know, I really, I know, Bill, you used to be on it with me and.
I've never been on it and I liked it sometime.
Yeah, you have, what are you gonna give up? Let's see, public works?
No, but I want to give up public works, but last year I would.
He's only on two of them right now anyway, though, so.
Right.
Personnel committee? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah.
Danny, you want the personnel committee?
I, I've never tried it. I tried it one time and then somebody threw me under the bus.
Who?
Danny, sitting next to you.
Jeff?
How'd I do that?
Long time, I don't remember.
Let's keep this nice, little uncle there. All right, so, all right, let's come back to that. Let's finish off this. Park board is, is Mark. Mark, you like that one?
I can't give that, yeah, I do, and someone quit if I give it up, so I have to keep it.
Okay, and.
Quit.
Follow it, huh?
Public works has been Danny.
I'd like to have that.
Yeah, you know, Danny, you've had it forever. Have you ever not had it?
I would give it up. It's easy for me, Jim needs, he can pick me up and go look at projects, but if Bill wants it, let him have it.
I thought we discussed last year that.
That Bill's gonna get it.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, he did?
I don't think that was a discussion, but.
We discussed it.
Okay, well, if Bill moved to, if Bill moved to the.
Main enough to keep the alternates, is that fine?
Sure.
So you're just swapping?
Yeah.
Okay. And can I, can I go back? Is Danny, you're still the alternate for the park board?
I guess so, yes.
Okay.
So put Danny on the pub, on the personnel committee.
Well, we gotta see what Jeff has here first. So Jeff, you're, you're, so let's go to the Met Council, I've never gone there, but I'm thinking that I may be going there, coming up because of the actions that are happening at the.
What's the count plan? There's, I mean, there's.
Yeah.
There's a new position.
Okay, Forest Lake Cable Commission, Jeff and then Danny. Jeff, how's that going?
Going good.
The, the meeting time been okay? Cause there.
It's before this meeting.
Yeah.
Tonight, you know, six o'clock meeting, it's kind of a rush, but.
Yeah.
Oh, we had to stop early.
Yeah, I could never do that one. Are you okay with that one?
Yeah.
Okay, and the rush line quarter? Well, actually, let's back up a second here. So you, you meet how often? You meet 12 times?
More than that.
Is that, is that necessary?
Well, I questioned it earlier, but we continue to meet every month and.
I mean.
Personnel committee update and that's meeting, that's.
They have to pay bills. They have to pay bills. I mean, they they're they're an entity that has to, you know.
They're an entity by itself. They're not.
Who's the backup on that?
They ain't like the any other committee liaisons, but Cable Commission is.
Danny, you're the backup?
I'm the backup on it, yeah.
You wouldn't mind going to a meeting or two here and there?
See what?
You wouldn't mind going to a meeting here and there, would you?
Uh, very few of them.
Oh, it would be very few.
Well, I would help if I need to.
Very few.
Okay, cause it cause 12 is a lot. And the way we we work the the pay, we've kind of spread it out to be so that we have similar amount of meetings, so.
Except.
Well, except for that one. That's what I'm saying. It's not fair. It's too many.
They won't cut it down. I mean, they can't cut it down.
Right. Shorter, you're not going and they don't have a quorum. That would be a problem. Okay, so. The rush line, is that still meeting?
It is, but we pulled out of it.
Oh, we did?
Yes.
Oh, that's right.
It's four to one.
I guess that was a moot point. All right, so. Watershed. Yeah, so. So so Mr. Griffith, the the watershed, the Rice Creek does not have the same requirements as Coon Creek did for the.
Yes, they do.
Public disclosure?
Yes, they do.
No, yeah, okay.
My understanding is all the watershed districts do have the same requirement, but you're saying they don't?
I've never been, I've never had that like I had on.
You're going to get another fine.
Well, no, there's a difference between being on the board and a liaison. The board is a voting, you know, boarding member. Like a liaison is not is not the same. Sunrise is a board, so you're appointed to a board.
Oh, okay.
Oh, so Rice Creek is just a liaison listening?
It's just a liaison for for different meetings.
All right, that's why Bill then. So you're okay with that one?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would give you two meetings. How often do the Public Works Advisory Board meet?
Four, four every quarter.
Four, five?
Generally no more than four times a year, but it all depends on if there's as needed in there somewhere.
So maybe five. And the park board?
Quarterly.
Yeah, quarterly.
So four will make that one a five. Well, you'd ever meet more than that?
No, no.
So four.
Four is plenty.
Okay, four. And the Personnel Committee, we meet three, four times?
Yeah.
Good. I'll put that's four. And as office liaison, I don't know if I can really qualify that one. Building inspector, how often you meet with the building guy? Just kind of like I do with the office?
Yeah, yeah. No set schedule.
Okay, so that's kind of.
I see him once a month, but just see what's going on.
Okay, so the Met Council, none, so.
Sunrise, I'd like to get back on Sunrise if there's a way we can work out the legal form of it.
I did, you know, I did look at the disclosure paperwork and and I did talk to Jamie briefly and as Bill identified earlier in the year, for whatever reason, city council members do not have to fill out the public disclosure, campaign finance paperwork in your seats that you currently hold as is required in for Sunrise Water Maintenance Organization. The Sunrise Maintenance Organization requires you to fill out financial disclosure as if you were a state official, which is a little bit different. And I did have a chance to look at the financial disclosure. And while I think that they try to keep it generic, it is a little bit more, you know, in depth and and I agree with Denny. I think maybe we should, maybe that should be something we talked to Senator Benson about to see if there isn't a way to to change that for a water maintenance organization that doesn't have a levy authority. The levy authority comes back to each council.
Can he go as a liaison?
I my suggestion would be that Denny file whatever he's comfortable filing. And if they accept it, then you're done.
Name, rank and serial number and see if they take it.
Not applicable?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever whatever you think is comfortable in terms of personal disclosure. And you can draw the line where you want, and if they accept it, you're done. And if they don't, then you can decide that you're not going to be appointed.
I tried that first time around.
Okay.
I kicked it back.
But we made quite a fuss, and so maybe they'll maybe they'll think twice about kicking it back.
I'm willing to give it a try.
Give it a try?
So just so you know, I did get a phone call from them. The first meeting because we didn't, we didn't attend, others didn't attend. They're having quorum problems.
How about that?
So they wanted to know what where Columbus was at. What I what I didn't realize was their joint powers agreement reads differently than the Forest Lake Cable Commission. So while you can have a a council member on, you can actually have two at-large, so you can appoint anyone in the community for two at-large. But you're also supposed to appoint an alternate so that you don't have quorum problems. And so that's they they had quite a large discussion about the alternate, you know, mean person. So I asked them if I could be the alternate and they said no. It specifically says that city staff cannot serve on the board.
That's right. I forgot. You don't have enough to do. It just just dawned on me. We should find some more for her to do. What do you think? Well, why do we? I'm not going to fill out that paperwork. Jeff, you want to fill out that paperwork?
So and I think I I looked at the paperwork. It's 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 pretty generic, right? You know, Bill, that, you know, I mean, they do ask for a little bit more information than what one would think you would be required to do. I think we can keep it pretty generic. You know, I mean, if and we can try that.
I don't think there's any downside in submitting and seeing if they're a little more flexible.
Could we send a third party there? A at-large person? Put in the pay, put in the website, looking for someone to.
It is.
Oh, it is on there.
Do you attend while they're processing the review? I mean.
I'll give it a try. I I was on there for three years, three, four years, and I filled this form out and got by with it. And I had no problem with it till the last time, the last year. They got a little stricter with it. Kind of playing around around the questions, you know.
They kicked my back and I had to redo it then. Yeah, no. I don't know why you even need to have to fill that out. Especially at our level.
Especially since you've already.
I could fill out a form, send it in, see if they accept it or not.
Okay, we'll go with that. So you'll be the main for that one. Second seat vacant. Is that something? Well, we already have it on the website. It's not going to happen. Got it. Okay, so we'll have to go back to the Personnel Committee is the last one. Go ahead.
Back to Sunrise.
Sure.
Can we, we're going to advertise for two, so we have an alternate.
You mean one of us to be alternate?
No, so when we're advertising for the at-large.
Yeah.
Can we have a main and an alternate for at-large?
Sure. I mean, but unless Denny takes it.
No, Denny would be a main and then we'd have another main at-large, and then the alternate would be in at-large.
Oh.
For Sunrise, because that's what they're asking. They want two, you have two members and then they want an alternate.
I would say on the website, we're going to have to do full disclosure on what's required for the position. Put a link to the form. We don't waste anybody's time.
Is the form online?
Must be.
I have a copy. I have a copy of the form.
So.
I wonder if the civilian has to do that.
It'll never get filled.
It'll never get filled. Okay, so I guess at that point we'd go back to the. Personnel Committee would be the last one, so.
I don't really, you know, it's up to you guys. I could say what often it to. You guys seem to be handling it real good.
So.
If you wanted to replace me, I'd swap the building inspector with Danny, but if you want to keep me, I'll keep it.
I'll let you keep the I'll keep the building inspector because I can do good. Real good as Leon. I get along real good. And it's I'm here. If he needs me, I comes and gets me.
Okay.
So right now, Mark, you have person, you have park board and fire board.
Yep.
So you're going to have to probably give one up, I think, because Bill.
I'll be happy to give one up.
All right, so Bill has a.
Someone wants the fire board, they can have that.
Jeff has 12 meetings. And Bill has one thing, which is Public Works Advisory, which is four to five times. So if you added, if you added Personnel Committee, which would bring that bring that up to about nine, 10 maybe. And then Jeff would be at 12. Danny, you would be at.
He took Sunrise.
Just Sunrise in the building official, which is really more of an everyday kind of thing. I'd be looking at seven, maybe nine, plus the everyday stuff. So.
I'll give a minimum, two, it doesn't matter, but I got to keep the park board.
Okay, so. Jeff is looking to me like it, the Bill should go to Personnel Committee, but I know you kind of wanted it again. I mean, you were on it for a while.
I was.
Do you remember Elizabeth, who was on that committee? I remember I I've always been on it.
Jeff and, no, you haven't. Jeff and I were on it with Elizabeth.
Oh, that's true.
Seven years ago.
And then you and then second time around, you got you got on.
Right.
Jeff didn't want to be on it anymore, so you got.
It was stressful.
It is a little bit.
We have nobody that seems to want to go know anything, and if I said no on something, it's always a problem.
I thought knowing stuff. About not on a blacktop plant.
No, yeah.
Go there. So.
So that's that's the problem, I guess. We've got a lot of yes, yes votes here.
Well, you know, I mean, we can talk about that for a minute. We got time. The the whole, the whole budget that we have for personnel, I think, needs to be reviewed and the what Elizabeth spends, I mean, she's she's been thrifty and moving things around and as people leave, redefining positions. I think at some point we really need to look at what that department gets. I mean, that the department has never gotten a raise. The people have gotten raises, but the department's never gotten a raise. So at some point, to deliver the services that the city needs.
I've gone up with timer two, I think, but I don't have a number for it.
I don't I don't know is if it has. I think.
Just hire another employee. We just want to, we just increase our employee. I'm against that.
The part-time people.
Serve it. Well, we start, we start everybody's part, start at part-time. And everybody kind of goes up an hour or something. I don't I don't like that. Less government.
However, the city has has its responsibilities, so how do you?
Sure they do.
You put everybody on part-time, then what do you got?
Nobody's part-time. I'm just saying that. We we hired, we're going to hire somebody to put an application out, but they're going to come in on part-time. But eventually they're going to be up to full-time, so now we got another full-time employee. I guarantee they'll be up to full-time in a couple of years.
But but what's the difference if if the budget hasn't increased?
It's going to increase. You can't keep, you can't keep hiring employees and increasing wages, out increasing the budget.
Well, but for the employees that have been hired, there's been a people leaving. So at some point, yeah, it will go up, but at that point, it will be driven, I think, by some external force, which, you know, we we have more people because we have a sewer and water system to maintain. That takes people to do that. Before that, we didn't have that.
We still have the same three people, the same three people. We didn't increase that department.
From before we had the water department? How many did we have back then?
I'm going to use an example, Grant Township, which.
Don't have a sewer and water.
They don't have sewer and water, but they have one part-time, one part-time city ministry. That's all they have. Their tax are half ours.
Yeah, I mean.
Same same population.
Grant Township is half. I would I would argue that. There's a big house they have.
Oh, well. They've got their house. It's proportional.
Yeah.
At the risk of waiting in where I don't belong. For at least at least 10 years since we became a city, I've questioned why we have a Personnel Committee. That is a remnant of the Tom Board days when you had a, you know, a very simple job of, you know, doing road and bridge and and the Personnel Committee really took the place of an administrator.
I always loved it when they picked somebody out of the crowd, they come up here and sit here and run them to the annual meeting. That was the best part of it.
And there's there's an attraction to small government and limited government, but when you operate as you do with a budget you do, most of that that function belongs with the administrator.
Yeah.
And and so you tend to have these discussions that other cities have at the administration level. And if you if you want to do that, there's nothing that says you can't do it, but it's a holdover from our Tom Board days.
See, I don't, I mean, as far as just having a city administrator here, I don't know how that would ever work, just the city administrator. There's nothing, I mean, it's hard enough for Elizabeth and the girls to get stuff out at certain times, especially this fall with all the with all the extra paperwork that was thrown through the front door. How how you would get things out? I mean, there's been issues with people not thinking, you know, getting out to, you know, developers and stuff, getting their land issues out, and a lot of that is caused by other issues that come up and.
I don't want to let employees go. I'm not seeing we won't honor half an employee like Grant Township or wherever else like Alabama doesn't employees. I just really want to see you hire another one. And I think to make, well, cut the story short, I don't want to be on the Personnel Committee. Then the fire board.
Or he's got 12 meetings. That's that's, I mean, the fact that.
You want me to be on the Personnel Committee?
I think so.
Let me on there, let's move on.
Okay. That was a that was a long way to get there.
Yes, it was. You should have just said that, Dave. Put me on there. I mean, Jeff is getting paid for his 12 meetings.
Yeah.
What?
Sure.
No, I'm not.
Forty bucks a shot for the extra meetings.
No.
No, it's.
So now so now Denny doesn't have a committee?
What?
Yeah, he does. He's got Sunrise if he makes it.
What do you mean he doesn't have a committee?
He's building inspector liaison.
He's got the building inspector liaison.
Me and Denny can split the Cable Commission.
That is not going to happen.
Well, that's right. You're going to take two. You promised two.
So do you want the Personnel Committee, Danny?
Well, that's okay. You can have it. That's fine.
Well, if you want it, you can.
I want my Public Works back.
No.
Okay.
You've been on.
No.
Okay. All right, so we're good there. What else do we have to do on that? We can now make a motion to adopt the changes of the organizational chart. Someone want to make a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Ayes have it. All right, what's up next, Elizabeth? We got engineers who, oh, Hornsby, Hornsby.
Hornsby.
Hornsby, go for it.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Got three items on the agenda. First two are both related to the Hornsby intersection. So I'll just probably take them both at the same time. One's the traffic impact study and one's the intersection control evaluation related to the future Hornsby intersection with the intent of looking at what's the what's the traffic going to look like when that intersection is relocated? What's the traffic going to look like once development starts occurring? And so you have the basically the summary pages and it give you the whole report of all the data. But in in summary, what it's saying is, once Hornsby Street is relocated, so it's a full intersection, and there's no development, MinDOT's traffic signal warrants are not met, but the minute one development occurs, two or three warrants are met and 7A, some of that third warrant is met. We prepared the report that way, knowing that development's coming and that it's likely going to be there at or immediately after the intersection is done. So the report is based on just one development occurring and that three of the MinDOT traffic signal warrants are met. So we're, I'd like you to accept the reports as such, and we can submit them to MinDOT to try to get that included then with the design.
So the last paragraph of this last page pretty much sums up all of this.
Yeah, and the ICE report then takes the data that was analyzed and and looks at what type of signal, what type of intersection control should be there? Should it be a four-way stop? Should it be a signal? Should it be a roundabout? And even though Hornsby North leg has about 3,000 cars a day and the South leg is less, but 97 has, you know, 15, 16,000 cars. A a roundabout was not recommended based on the large traffic differential, so a signal is what is being recommended. So at this point, again, I basically like, I don't know, it's a motion to accept the reports and then we can send them to MinDOT.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion to accept this report?
Motion to accept this report and then send it on to.
Both reports, the TIS and the IC.
Okay, both reports and send them on to MinDOT.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Ayes have it.
So again, I just want to reiterate, that's our recommendation. This isn't a guarantee that MinDOT's going to accept it and and go forward with it, but it's our argument that they should.
It's just amazing that you can have a roundabout on the West Side, which would, in my opinion, have less traffic than on the East Side.
It's got 54 coming into us, way more traffic than on the Hornsby.
Not the traffic coming in that I'm looking at. It's the constant traffic.
You have a less of a.
Differential.
A differential.
Yeah.
54 and 23.
You know, the sad thing is, if they don't put either or in, it's going to cost more to have it done in five years than it would be to do it now with everything we have prepared.
If for some reason they don't agree with it or deny it, we'll push and make sure at least the conduit and other elements are in for for future, but.
Well, I just used that coming off of Old Hornsby to take a left on Saturday morning. I mean, so it was 11:30-ish.
Oh, but that's pretty tough.
Saturday morning, I went to take a left, take a right on the the South Hornsby. And on Saturday morning, it was rough. I can't imagine what it'd be like during rush hour to do anything there.
Actually went down that way this evening around 5:30, 5:45 on the South Hornsby, came out and maybe it was, maybe it was a, just a accident, but it was, it wasn't, we got off, you know, fairly. There was there was gaps in traffic, but that's not normal.
No.
I've been there before.
And they come off the highway, they're really moving.
Yeah, I just, I think, I don't know, MinDOT's not here, but I think the lack of a right turn on red on the eastbound 97 from northbound 35 is going to create a problem. Those cars are going to back up down that exit ramp, block the freeway. Because that's how it used to be before they had a double turn lane. I remember that many years ago. So that that'll be interesting when that the diverging diamond goes in. And I've been paying attention to that. Every diverging diamond I've seen lately has a no right turn on red. So it's going to be interesting. Okay, anything else?
Um, yeah, the last item was at the last meeting. Rice Creek Watershed District was here talking about the comprehensive stormwater plan for Dish 15. That is, that's in your attachments, A, four through eight, with a memo I provided Elizabeth today. And just a little bit back on it, Doug, I'm very popular here. I've been with TKDA for the last three, four months. He'll be helping with this if it's going forward. Larry's been the city engineer at Prior Lake for the last 15 years and he's now with TKDA, so. he's now with TKDA, so he was missing that company to council meeting, so I bring him along tonight.
I'm sure he's having fun.
Um, but what, so what that memo is, is, um, showing that to do a comprehensive stormwater management plan for a ditch fifteen area, and then there's that other area between Hornsby and Thirty-five, um, we had, I broke it down into five, um, different phases, but the first three are what is needed to get the report done. So there's, there's, um, modeling and mapping of the area. There's a, preparing, preparing the report itself and meeting with the, um, with the agencies and landowners. We tried to combine some meetings there. And then, developing what would be the cost of the infrastructure improvements and spreading that over, uh, developable acreage. And, so those first three phases we had at forty-four thousand five hundred. And that's where Rice Creek said they would cost share. Um, they didn't commit to half of it, but they, maybe it was like in the fifteen thousand, fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range. And, the remainder that, then the city would bear, we would add that into the assessments when the improvements were done as those costs spread out over the developable area.
If those improvements were done.
If those improvements were done. Um, the optional, what I'm calling phase four and five is, uh, if the ditch was able to be moved, is, was one of the elements they were talking about, cause the ditch right now goes through kind of the middle of some of the developable properties. There's, um, state statutes about moving that, has to be taken care of. And then the last one was, if the city, this is just for your information, um, if the city had desired to take over ownership of the ditch, then that's what a, a phase five would be. But, we're looking at the first three phases and we also anticipate that it's kind of, like going through phase one will determine, you know, can we move the ditch physically or not? If we can't, then there'll be cost savings on the remaining phases. So it's kind of, it pounds on each, on them as you go along. So that would be the maximum, um, not to exceed amount. And then we would submit to, um, an application to Rice Creek Watershed District for, uh, cost sharing assistance.
And they've indicated to us that if we submit a letter along with the, the work, that they would accept that.
We're also hoping to be able to use as much of their information as they have. They have a lot of, um, information and modeling, which again will lower some of these costs, so.
I mean, that's thirty thousand dollars that we have to come up with from somewhere. Elizabeth's got a plan on that?
You know, I'm, I'm very, I'm optimistic, you know, with Phil. I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna be more in the twenty-five thousand dollar range. I think Rice Creek will come up with in the twenty thousand dollar range.
Okay, so where's the other twenty-five coming from?
And the other twenty-five, um, we'd have to look at the transportation fund. And we'd have to look at, you know, it's over time. We don't, we don't, we don't have, um, a pot of money that says stormwater.
Right.
But certainly I think we can use, the transportation fund, we've always put money there. The other fund is, you can look at the EDA unit fund. There's a little bit of money there, but I think we can put it together because I think it will foster development.
And I know, um, when Frank Radalone was here, he thought it would be a good idea cause I think some of that impacts his land. Um, yeah, I just hate to spend twenty-five to, because we get twenty, you know, from the watershed. Question is, when we're done with this, Dennis, will we really have something that, um-
It's usable.
That is, yeah, that can, I mean, is it another, it's three hundred thousand dollar piece of paper that lets us move Hornsby?
Yeah, it's a usable document in that, then as development occurs, you can handle it one of two ways. The city can initiate projects and purchase land and through the assessments, or you can have the developers do the improvements and get credit for it as they, as they develop.
Right, because, because the phasing in, so you did this analysis and Rice Creek says sure, and we got this all done, um, it's still not funded. I mean, the work has to, I mean, they're talking moving ditches and, and building ponds and acquiring land and-
Right.
And, you know, that's-
And that, the report would identify what those costs would be and then what, how much you have to assess back to the developable area. And you would add these engineering fees in there too, so you're, you're upfronting it, but eventually you recover.
But, so, so the question's gonna be, like, even up on the north, um, northeast piece, we were looking at a pond up there. And we're looking at, um, basically doing it ourselves with a, assessed, assessed common drainage thing?
We're still, we're still doing the same type of study. It's just on a, only on seventeen acres versus, I don't know how many acres are here, but we're just doing the same idea. We're just locating a pond and everyone will be able to use it.
And that means since the city owns the land, we're spreading the cost back over some old acreage.
Right. Um, but I mean, every time we talk about the cost to do this, I mean, we're like, we don't have the ability to come up with the money even to do our own little seventeen acres. So now when you throw five hundred acres at it, how are we gonna, how would we fund this thing? This would be a huge thing for a little city to fund without the development.
The way we're funding Horns, or North Hornsby Street is, every developer that has come in, we've told them that there's a sale price of the land.
Yeah.
But then there's a three dollar surcharge, which included the drainage and road improvements. And every developer that has come in so far has said, okay, we understand.
Because of the benefit of having regional bonding, they have more land available for development.
That's, and that's fine, but, but on the South Side, if we don't have the developers or these people qualify for deferments and all this stuff, we're gonna be funding-
We're not gonna physically-
Millions of dollars to give.
We're not gonna physically build the improvements. If, if development doesn't happen for twenty years, then this report sits on a shelf for twenty years.
Is there a shelf life on the report?
Just if there's different regulations that are enacted or maybe cost inflation.
So the answer to that is yes.
So we, one, one example is, we had a conversation with a potential developer in the Southeast quadrant, and knowing where that improvement is gonna be would have furthered that conversation. I'm not saying the conversation's not ongoing, but it's one of those pieces of information that you can provide to developers and say, this is where the ditch improvement goes. This is how it's gonna drain the land. Um, you know, again, you have to decide if that's enough of a benefit to find twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, but it would certainly have helped that conversation to have more data on where the drainage is gonna go.
So Dennis, would, would this be a plan for, that says we need to acquire this land? And then that person knows that his land is worth more because that's where we wanna put our pond, or how would that go?
Or you'd assign, um, a market rate to it, so that if, if landowner B, we show a pond on his property, then he's gonna get the market value for that area. But then that, the cost of that is spread out over the whole distributary area.
But my, I guess my point is, is your, you would be assigning value. You would be, would your study be the one that says it's gonna go here, it's gonna be this big?
Yes.
Okay. Which will have an impact right there to wherever you choose to put that.
Yeah, we'll have a few meetings with landowners to try to-
I don't think Dennis gets to choose though. I think it's based on low point. I think it's based on eligibility.
It's based on low point, but there are, you know, you can move, because it's so flat, I mean, you can pick multiple areas probably. But, I think the biggest decision issue that you have is if you thought that the area that's, um, affected by this study is not ripe for development, is not likely to be developed, then, then it's just, you know-
Kind of a waste.
It's always goes on the shelf. But if you believe that this is a developable area and that you, and there's benefit to having common ponds, regional ponds, then, then this is the first step.
Well, the one person that stood up for it was really looking for the ditch relocation.
That's what I was gonna say. It doesn't include ditch relocation on that east side of the Hornsby?
There'd be that phase four piece then, and, and, you're fictional.
Because that was, that sparked some interest, getting that ditch moved back farther, again, that's, or run it against the road.
I would say if there's a specific landowner developer that's looking to, to relocate the ditch just for his property, I don't know if that's physically possible without doing the study, then there should be costs assigned to certain property owners.
Mm-hmm.
For, for benefit of just their property.
Alright, what do you guys think?
I think it's a horrible idea, but we have to do it.
Danny?
Yeah, I agree with him.
Jeff?
I don't know.
You don't like it?
No, I don't. These guys don't like it. Nobody likes it. I don't know if we need to do it or not.
Okay. Bill?
I, I agree with everybody else. I think, but I think we need to do it. However, the bad shelving part, I mean, that thing get put out of the shelf in a year if the DNR comes up with a smaller-
A new rule.
A new rule.
Or the watershed.
Wish somebody put a news around them, pull them back.
I guess the other benefit is, we're, we are doing the comprehensive plan and now it will get in everyone's plan. So everyone, there was a little buy-in. Obviously, yes, we have rule changes, but if it's in plans, then people, and it's in the plans, then we're more apt to get funding for it.
Well, and the other consideration is that Rice Creek is putting in a bunch of money for it, so.
Yeah, well, you know, the, the question though is if, it, there's a, there's a, there'll be the forty, would it, would we assess the forty-five thousand or the, the whatever's not funded?
Whatever's not funded.
So we wouldn't assess over what the Rice Creek has donated? So, so if the, the value to the assessment could be, well, I suppose that the value to the assessment would be only the twenty-five thousand, um, and you really can't include what the cost to do the work is, cause that's gonna be saving the guy's, it's a trade-off between him doing it or doing it regionally. So, is Dennis, is it typically cheaper to do it regionally than it is?
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna typically end up with less infrastructure hopefully, and then you're gonna get, the, the other goal is to get more developable area.
Oh, right. So the landowner will have more developable area and he'll have a cheaper per cubic foot of water displacement.
Yeah, he'll be sharing in the improvements that aren't on his property, but overall it'll be cheaper cause he's not-
So it is cheaper than doing it yourself?
Yeah.
Well, then I'd say we probably do it.
Otherwise everyone's dealing with their own drainage on their own-
Yeah, and they can each do it and each do it in their own way and create their own little pond for kids to drown in. But, um, if, if they have one regional one, then it's dollar for dollar cheap.
Yeah, and it's more efficient than, you know, one regional pond's more efficient than five-
Okay.
-smaller ponds of the same size.
There's certain kind of problems we run into. People doing their own stuff, the elevations are off on the residential, precinct ditches aren't flowing right, these systems.
Alright. Okay, so, do we have, do we have a motion? No.
Not yet.
Not yet. I don't, no. It's getting late. So, someone wanna make a motion to, uh, well, first off, are we gonna have TKDA do it? I mean, is there an advantage of using our attorney or our engineer versus a third-party person? I mean, I know we, we didn't get another bid, but, um-
I mean, I guess we've got relationships and working with Rice Creek.
Yeah. So there would be some benefits there, you think, from your side, where?
Yeah, I fully expect that as we go along. It's kind of, this is worst-case scenario, so if we're able to use some of Rice Creek's data or find out we're not doing this, then that number will decrease some.
Okay.
Kind of like our, um, the, the traffic impact study and ICE report, the budget is gonna be going half away.
Okay, good. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to accept or deny this proposal?
You know, approve it.
Prove or deny this, what?
You approve the proposal.
Prove or deny the approval?
Yeah, you only accept reports.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve his proposal.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Just to take argument.
Okay.
So if you do this and the residents along there don't agree with it, it doesn't matter, you're-
Right. It's just like putting in water and sewer and tarring their road. Same thing.
So they'd have to go along with it?
They would have to go along with it.
Information will be used with them, but, I mean, we're not gonna let them dictate exactly where it's gonna go.
We got a couple of residents here. You guys for or against this idea? For? Danny? Mike?
I don't know enough about it yet, but one of my thoughts is, is who's gonna maintain this thing?
It's a good question.
The regional ponds would be typically owned and maintained by the city, but the ditch is still a county ditch system.
Okay. Good answer. So you're, you'd be for it or against it, or, I don't know?
I am, I guess I don't know enough about it yet and to see really how it affects everybody. I mean, I understand the concept of it, but I guess I would need to talk to some people that have some experience in this and ideas.
So, it, thanks. If someone decides not to use it, Bill? If someone decides to, they would be assessed for it, whether they use it or not?
It's just like, if you think about the Northeast, where we control all the land, anybody who, who buys into that land is part of that regional system. So anybody, if you create a comprehensive, comprehensive system on the South Side, you're creating the same thing and everybody buys in or, or not.
Well-
It's, it's just like, think about your sewer and water.
They'd be very foolish not to use it, cause they're paying to use the regional system, so why would you build your-
But the point is, is they, they don't have the choice anymore. They will pay the assessment. Or, I mean, they'll pay, they'll pay a piece of this assessment that we're doing today, as well as a piece of the assessment, um, for the, the purchasing of the land and building the structures and all that. And, and that could be quite substantial.
Which would probably be less money than building a pond on your own.
Unless you don't plan on developing, it could be a pediment to keeping your property. Cause the assessments would be assessed at the time of, so if everybody but one guy, one guy wants to stay there and not do anything, he's gonna be forced to pay these assessments? Will the deferrals apply? I mean, what's the road we're going down?
It's exactly the same type of improvement as your sewer and water. It's a, it's a, now a public stormwater system and the benefits are as described, but the downside, and that's why I said, if you, if you felt like the land wasn't gonna develop, then, then it's a shelf document. But if, if you think the land's gonna develop, then it's a benefit to the property owners. If, if they plan to develop. If they plan to hold land, uh, they potentially have an assessment that they have to carry.
We have a lot of assessments now nobody's paying for.
In, in this particular, in this particular ditch line though, this is not the whole freeway district.
Ditch fifteen, right?
I'm, I'm unaware. There might be only one property owner that might be holding.
Okay. Jeff?
And the, the thing is, the, you, you could have somebody come in tomorrow and wanna do this work, and then, then you'd be looking at basically starting from step one-
Right.
-the full cost.
Right. Jeff?
You, you said the pond would be maintained by the city. Who pays for the land that the pond is gonna be on?
It's part of the, regional assessment.
Alright. But would be responsible for the clean-up?
Yeah, same as what we're planning on the Northeast quadrant.
The thing also, all the water goes to one pond instead of a whole bunch of collecting, trash-collecting ponds everywhere along the land.
And we, and with development agreements, we generally, generally, while we don't own the ponds, we take a, a right to clean them in lieu of the property owners, so we don't have problems twenty years out.
So, so can the cleaning be assessed?
It can be. It can be. Usually what you would have is a, kind of a stormwater charge like you do a water charge.
Sure.
Which is exactly what we did for the Priner Preserve. City Council agreed to take on the maintenance of the stormwater ponds.
Well, we did, but we didn't do, we did, we do that with assessments, or?
We said we would charge back the association, but we said we would take on the work.
Oh, okay. So, that, that would be something-
That's the model.
Yep. Okay, with that emotion and a bunch of discussion, I'll call for vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so, I guess you'll go ahead with that and you keep it at fifty percent and you should be good, right?
If you, uh, surprise them.
Alright, thank you.
I thought you were gonna do that. I thought you said it was gonna be thirty thousand? Is that what you said in the-
Rice Creek?
Yeah, no, uh, your initial-
He said fifty, I thought.
Rice Creek said it's somewhere between ten and fifty is what they see.
I'm good.
We're actually trying to even it out.
Okay, what else you got, Dennis?
Uh, that's it.
Attorney's report?
Attorney's report.
Counsel's report. Bill?
I have nothing tonight.
Danny?
I have nothing.
Jeff?
I'm looking for, uh, attorney brothers. Uh, we're, we're looking at, uh, putting audio/video in here. And, uh, we, we left the last person we, to put a bid in, that weren't, weren't attorney calls and stuff. Now we're going with attorney brothers. I think they're, uh, we're waiting for a bid on them. And I think it's looking good there, so it should be pretty quick.
Yeah, they're not, I don't know. It's always the cheapest, but, okay, anything else? Mark?
Nothing.
Okay, I don't have anything. Um, moving on to the public works report. That's not like you.
Turned over a new leaf for a year.
New road graver? New skit?
Nope.
When's the new track?
Uh, March probably?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, at the last, uh-
Mr. Mayor and Council, at the last, uh, meeting of the year, we had a resident, um, actually a business owner that has, uh, business off of, uh, Hornsby Street, and they were requesting a light at the corner of Hornsby and 97. So, this, I contacted, uh, Canexus to get a price, and this is what they came up with.
Seems awful high.
Yeah, it does.
The electric is at Old Hornsby. There's no electric at that interchange.
If you look at the map on the back page, it shows, shows the work that they need to do. So the, the power is at Old Hornsby. They gotta bore all the way across and then put in a new pole and run the power.
Why don't you run it overhead?
That's, I was gonna ask.
What's that?
That's, that's, I was gonna say the same thing, why not go overhead?
Didn't we say we're gonna wait on?
That's awesome, boring, isn't it?
Sorry.
I, I don't know. I mean, maybe there's a lot of utilities. Uh, I didn't dictate overhead or boring or, or anything. I just said I need a light here.
Can't believe there's no other power anywhere else.
They may not be going overhead where they, where they're not existing.
Could be. I, I mean, I, I assume that they, they bid it this way for a reason, so.
Yeah, didn't we just talk about this, that we're gonna wait on this?
Well, we did. Um, I mean, at the, at the results of the traffic study, which with one development would warrant this light.
Correct. We basically did the legwork because a business owner wants a light. So.
I'd say you did a good job.
Good job.
If the, if the electric is already there, it would be a $2,000.
Right.
Cost.
I don't know, Mark. What would you charge to put that light in? I don't think I could get 10 grand out of it. I know I could probably get five.
Probably five. I guess at what, one, is there a pole down on that one area they're getting the power from, or is that underground?
Boy, it's all the way up. It looks like, all the way up by the corner.
See, one, two, three poles, overhead conductors, I don't know, pretty high. Is this something we're gonna consider? Because that's what we can free anyway.
Yeah, it's temporary, so. I, I agree with you guys. I don't know if we can, I don't think this is, uh, I know it's a dark corner, but once the, once the diverging.
The downside of it is, is once they finish the interchange, there'll be a light there.
Right. Well, light.
Potentially.
Stoplight.
If there's a stoplight there, they'll put a street light on it.
Yeah. Right. Well, I, I think we put this aside. What do you guys think? You wanna make a motion to do this?
I've moved on already.
Moved on. I think we can make a motion to put that aside, I guess.
Well, you don't need a motion if you're not.
Right. I get that. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I guess we wanna talk about decals.
Okay.
Why? Just put them on.
So how many do you have? Enough for the whole thing? For every truck?
No, I need to order.
Okay.
I had enough to do the dump trucks, which are done.
Are they big enough? Well, we'll need to see a picture. That's the new one or the old one?
That's the new one.
Is that big enough? That's pretty small, too.
It's pretty small.
You know how much vinyl, you know how much vinyl costs? Not very much.
I mean, what do you want, a two-footer on there?
Full door.
The door. I mean, have it bleed off to the fender and do a partial wrap, some plagues.
I'm with you, Jeff. That's gotta be a lot bigger.
I think so, too.
Huge, the whole door.
I thought we talked about this before, but.
Can't we send the truck out and get a two-tone, too?
We can do whatever you want. You just tell me how big and what you want.
Why don't you, why don't we have a discussion on what you're paying and how, I mean, that's a, that's a very inexpensive thing to do.
So, tell me how big you want it and, and we'll make them. I, I mean, we're not opposed to anything. That's just.
So that's, that's not the new one for the, for the pickup truck, is it?
That's the one that's been on, that's the one that we've had on all of our trucks for.
The, the manufacturer logo's bigger. Alright, yeah, I agree with you, Jeff. Let, let's, let's beef it up. Amp it up a little bit.
So tell me what, tell me what you want, because I don't, I don't wanna go buy something and then have you tell me that.
Let's see that truck again. I mean, dump truck.
I mean, that should fill up the whole door.
It should, that circle should be 14 inches in diameter.
So that, that decal is 18 inches wide?
Yeah, that circle should be almost as big as the, as the Columbus.
So do you want it three feet wide?
No, I think it should go from the door handle to the, I mean, I do my trucks, and when I do my own trucks, I, I usually look at the door and what looks good on it. So you go, you fill up the area. So like, that, the S should be right over by the crack of the, of the, of the door.
You figure about 75% of the coverage area?
Yeah, something, that's a good ratio.
That sticker should be more up into the.
Well, it should be bigger.
Over and up.
I was trying to keep it so you could see it when the wing was up.
So if you had to see, starting at that door opening there, see that little eviscerer, the regress back, and then maybe the S about an inch from the door, crease the front, to fill it, it'd fill it in pretty nice.
If that's 18, I'd say it should be another 12 inches wider.
I'll measure the door and tell them I want it to fit.
Right. Now, there are people that have, actually have, you give them your model of your truck, and they'll actually scale it and stick it in there and show you what it looks like, and before they make it. I know a lot of my customers do that. It's very expensive.
How much do we wanna spend?
You know how much you pay for those?
I, I don't.
Are they more than $30?
I, I guess I would've figured that it would've been 50 to 75 dollars per vehicle.
For two doors?
For that, that's a guess. I don't remember.
Okay. Do you guys put them on?
We put them on.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, would, do you guys mind doing the peeling? You know, you got peel, you, you ever done vinyl graphics?
Yeah, we put those on.
No, but actually made it?
Oh.
The machine cuts it, it takes two seconds, and then you have to like pull off all the excess. That's the, that's the labor. Alright, we'll, we'll talk. We'll look at bigger.
Assuming you got a vinyl cutter.
Oh, I've been doing that for years, yes.
Alright, get some chrome wheels and then two-tone it, too.
Color?
Blind and yellow.
Looks good with orange.
Maybe we could get a wiper for the back, like Danny had. Okay. Alright, so what else? Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Public information coordinator?
Yes, I have something to add. Um, at the last meeting, the EDA meeting, we decided to cancel Columbus and go with the newsletter instead. And I just wanna ask a couple questions about the newsletter and what we had in mind. So, um, my first question is, if the newsletter is to replace Columbus, is this newsletter only geared towards business, businesses in the city, or is this gonna be a more like citywide, here's what's going on, kind of a newsletter?
It does go into businesses only.
It's Columbus, so it's not Columbus.
But you could also think of it as the business of Columbus in general, what's happening, what's going on.
Yeah, I, I think we're looking at the businesses. Would it be possible to include in that it's gonna be electronic at some point, it's gonna be, uh?
I would use probably MailChimp and it's a easy way to get out.
It's just blast out, so, um, I don't know, I don't know how we would do this, but in order to get, you know, could we create some blogs or some sort of chat rooms or community rooms about events, where people could log in and say, because like, like at Columbus, we would go, you, you diligently had topics and table captains and, and issues that people could discuss and.
We could do a webinar.
Could do a webinar?
A webinar where you, they would log in and then you could take questions electronically while they're talking.
This, I mean, it's a little bit out of the box, but if we did something like that, either, either in a chat room or in a, um, a chat room at a time or a webinar with some feedback, um, that would be interesting to see if that would catch on, you know, say, hey, you know what, at nine o'clock on this date, we're gonna talk about, um, streets, or we're gonna talk about the bridge project, or you know?
You could also do, um, if you guys are familiar with all this, but Facebook Live is a really to do that, so you say the city's gonna go live at 8:00 AM. Tune in if you wanna talk about streetlights at Hornsby, and then people can comment.
Yeah.
On the post, and then you can answer questions as they come in.
That's, that would be another.
I'm glad you two understand it, because the rest of us are talking.
Sometimes.
Do we wanna do that? Does the office staff take a time up?
Well, I don't know if it is. I, I think.
On camera.
No, it would be, we would have to log in. It would be us.
Log in?
We would log into this webinar, into this chat session and, and be the.
Cameras in front of us on the.
You don't have to do it. I mean, you can do it just with words, or you can do it with camera. I mean, it's up to.
With your new, uh, system, your public system.
So is that considered a meeting?
Bill? That's why we pay bill.
So, yeah, so that it would kinda be posted and stuff.
Well, we, we post, we post Columbus, right?
What if we get the results and this went over, like, we have our meetings and papers? This is what was printed out or, I don't know.
Could use like a Survey Monkey type thing that, yeah.
Is it surveys or?
Yeah, with the, you know, I guess.
You can include a survey as part of the.
I don't know about you guys, but I'm.
Computer it out?
Well, it's pretty busy. You know what it is? You got.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay. Not everybody's gonna have time to sit at eight o'clock or nine o'clock at night or whatever.
But we, we did it for Columbus, which was tough to do. We all meet there for a couple hours.
Once a year.
Yeah, this is what I'm talking about, a once-a-year thing.
Oh, I thought this was a.
No, this is, this is our Columbus for next year, for this year. It's a one hour. We can either meet here, or we can stay at home in your pajamas, or whatever you're gonna do, but, um.
I'm just trying to figure out what we wanna do this year.
Yeah.
For this, and the newsletter's been on my mind and, yeah, so.
I think at minimum the newsletter, but.
Okay.
Maybe.
I'll look into the whole webinar.
Look into a twist, too. And, and, and that might be something that might take time to get a da- adaption to, but something that we could spend an hour.
Okay. Do you think that the newsletter should go out quarterly, or once a month, or once a year, or weekly? Uh, I don't have, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just minus the weekly part.
Twice a year.
Quarterly.
Somewhere in between there, third.
Or is it just weekly newsletters?
What did you say?
Yeah, it takes a lot of time to prepare all that, though. That's too much for us.
I agree.
How much time you think it would take to prepare one of these letters?
I think once a month would be pushing it.
Okay, so quarterly would be, okay. I agree, so. Too much?
Twice a year.
Twice a year?
Anybody else say twice a year? We got a majority.
I think twi- That's right, that's how it works here. I, I think twice a year is just a list a little bit too infrequent, where people forget about it. I think if you went quarterly, you know, you'd see these things every three months and you'd kinda maybe read them. But once a year is like, not often enough to really.
Twice a year.
Twice a year.
A lot of cities do newsletters, and we don't have anything like that.
And this could, this could extend to the residents if, if you did, but we have like 13 people on our residents list, so that's not going.
We have over 200 people signed up to get our minutes and our public hearing.
I thought it was only like 30.
I did it today. It's over 200 people.
What's that many?
It's changed.
Yeah.
Since I started, the numbers gone up.
Oh, yeah, but when did that happen and why?
I could.
I can tell you when it happened.
When there's controversial topics, people sign up to get minutes.
Well, there you go, with context.
I, yeah, I think it's great.
Did they say any, any publicity is good publicity?
Don't flip that. I know this is your position to do it, but how many hours you think it would take to prep one of these to get it out? I mean, I don't wanna tell you hours and hours and hours of your time to friggin' do a quarterly versus biannual.
So, to, to be frank about it, um, I'm also working on getting our, like, a new website going, because we have the Oracle software. And in my mind, um, unless I expand my hours or work late, it's either gonna be the website or the newsletter at this time. I feel like if I wanted, if we needed to do both, I would need an extra afternoon.
So you think in four hours to prepare it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, I mean, we have EDA budget, right? I mean, that we would've spent, I mean, not to spend money that we had to spend, but we spent a couple grand on that Columbus, right?
$2,500 was the budget.
So if we looked at that, at, um, divide that out and say, I mean, we could do, even if we did two, right, we could do two, and that's only eight hours at, I don't know what our net costs are, but that would be well below $2,500.
We'll start out with two, and if it works good, then you can go to four.
Okay, I'm with that. You guys like that idea?
Yeah, fine.
Okay, wow. Someone wanna make a motion of that effect?
Make a motion to put out a newsletter for the business owners, say it twice a year.
Say again.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anything else? Okay, uh, next up is the, uh, city administrator's report.
All of my items are continued to the next meeting, um, with the exception of one question. And that is, at our last meeting, we said that we were gonna have two public meetings in February. One was gonna be on the 8th, and the other one was gonna be on the 15th, and we were gonna.
March, March. You said February.
It was February.
Yep, February.
We're gonna have what in February?
February, so public meetings in February.
Oh, okay, right.
And one was gonna be on February 8th, and the other one was gonna be on February 15th. Do you have a preference as to which one is which? One was the meeting for, um, the rest of the community, and the other one was the meeting with the freeway district. And we were gonna, right now, Inoka County has an open house on the 8th. And we were gonna marry up with that meeting.
I don't have any preference in February.
So I think they're more of the freeway district, the Inoka County.
Okay. Alright, but we were gonna talk about March.
Yes, and we have to talk about calendar in March.
Yes. So, um, I, I, I think we should eliminate the second meeting in March.
First meeting.
Why?
First, first meeting.
Why did?
It's spring break, man.
I missed a couple meetings here and there. You can worry about it. Just miss them. You